We're going to open the meeting of the Planning Board at 6:08 on March, lost track, We have an agenda. There have been some continuances here, but we'll just get there when we get there. Westmore Club has been continued for anybody who's here.
Okay.
And, anybody have any questions?
No.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, Nat's made a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, David seconded. Catherine? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have the January 11th. We do have a quorum, by the way. We established the quorum.
Sorry.
It's not on there. The minutes are okay, except that Catherine has to confirm a couple of things. Does somebody want to make a motion to approve them with Chairman's review?
To continue.
Or do you want to continue? Because it's just three things. I have the notes on those three things.
Well, make a motion to continue to April then.
Okay. Nat's made a motion to continue January 11th, 2018 to April 9th.
Second.
Okay, John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I assume you're tacitly in favor. Okay. We have A and Rs.
Should probably take them.
Take them one at a time because...
Yeah, you got a negative in there.
Well, it's not actually a negative. She called me crying today, so we have to figure out what's happening there.
Okay.
But if you want to do kimchi bedding, somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to endorse.
Uh, hang on one second. I cannot sit on that. I did the research. All right, Barry?
So, that's right. Nat's made a motion to endorse. Do I hear a second from the board?
Second.
Motion's now made. Second, discussion on the issue. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes happy unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Lauren, what's going on, Leslie? She called me today and it was hard to understand what was happening.
So, the A and R plan that was submitted is based on a special permit that hasn't been applied for or issued.
Who put this? Who put this application in?
I don't know.
I think there's a couple in here in the same boat. We should probably have that discussion with Mike.
It just confirmed before.
I think it is, because she mentioned it to me.
Yes, it was my turn.
I think you might want to have a conversation with Mike. This is not the first time. Somebody want to make a motion to? This is an A and R, Leslie. I don't want to deny it.
Well, you only have 20 days to act on it.
I know.
So, if you want to deny it and then allow to waive the application fee next time?
Reapply without application. Okay. I mean, I'll file that.
It's not a huge...
Done that before.
Yeah. All right, David's recused. Catherine? Okay, does somebody want to make a motion to deny without prejudice and allowed to waive the fees coming back in for April?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's without prejudice. Okay, we have Ronnie and Andrew Roberts, 816 Allen's Lane. That's a simple endorsement.
Make that motion to endorse.
I'll second that.
Okay, Nat made the motion to endorse and John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Then we have John Sherman, 6 Maticat Road. Staff recommends endorsement. Somebody want to make that motion?
Make that motion to endorse.
I'll second that.
Okay, John seconded. Nat made the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. McKinnon at 68 Pacoma Road.
Just out there.
Staff recommends endorsement.
Yep, I see what they're doing. I'll make that motion.
All right, Nat's made the motion to endorse. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded. Catherine? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. John Monera, I cannot sit on. Barry?
Yep, thank you. So, Leslie, you were going to provide us some information on this one before we...
There was an issue with the plan that was originally submitted that this plan resolved, so we recommend endorsement.
Okay.
Just to create one lot for conveyance.
All right. Board members, any questions?
Hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to endorse.
And do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's now made. Second, a discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Mrs. Williams recused.
Okay, now we have Orange Street, 53 Orange Street. Leslie?
Um, oh, so, the purpose of this plan is to adjust the lot lines between A and B. And I do recommend endorsement of the plan, but I wanted to just make a note that it will require relief from ZVA.
Variance relief.
So, perhaps I should add a note to the plan or something to nothing like that.
Yeah.
At least one in your records.
Because if they make one more nonconforming as to lot area, that's a variance.
Right.
Hmm.
They're both nonconforming now. One will become less nonconforming and one will become more.
Yeah, they're going to have to give one a variance. The other one can be done in staff, correct?
Except if they affect on the other.
Other lot. It's tainting the other lot.
Uh-huh.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion on this one?
Make the motion to approve or endorse.
Provided that?
Provided that they have the relief from ZVA.
No, we can't count, we can't do that. But there's a notation on the plan that variance relief will be necessary for the smaller lot because it's becoming more nonconforming. Does that work, Leslie? In a simplified form?
Uh, that does work. If it's a length of plan, I don't think it is. How much is it going to be? You think we'll be able to have a note?
Catherine, put it up there.
So, if they can, I think we should have the note added. If they can't, I still think you should endorse it.
Yep. Okay, is that your motion, Nat? Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's not laying cold.
Okay, who seconded? John? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have secondary dwellings. I believe they're all positive with staff recommendations. And there's a one, we'll do the tertiary separately. So, there are four. Waters Edge, 60 Medooey Creek.
That's continued.
Oh, got it.
Okay.
Okay, we have Kressman at 31 Winnet Road. Most of us are familiar with that property. Pippin's Way, 11 Pippin's Way. Immodest Axe Realty Trust at 10 Gray Avenue. Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure.
Barry's...
I'll make a motion to approve Kressman on 31 Winnet, Pippin's Way on 11 Pippin's Way, and Immodest Axe Realty Trust on 10 Gray Ave as per staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm going to do the tertiarys at Pippin's.
Tertiary dwelling on Pippin's Way. Leslie, did the planning board, after spending 10 years in court on Pippin's Way, did they limit them to two, a primary and a secondary? Or can they have a tertiary out there?
I think we had that law on. That law wasn't written yet.
Leslie? Let Leslie answer. I don't think they're, I think that, Arthur, you were involved with this mess for all this time.
And I'm representing the contract purchaser for whom this application was put in. Tertiary dwellings didn't exist at the time that the subdivision was done, so I don't believe there's anything in the subdivision materials that would address that issue at all.
So, they're automatic?
I don't think so. But conversely, Arthur, doesn't it say you're allowed a secondary dwelling? And it doesn't say anything about allowing something?
I don't believe it says anything about the issue at all in the decision. Any limitation on dwellings.
There was something about seconded.
I don't think so.
I just can't remember what it was.
We spent so long in this.
But there was certainly no prohibition of tertiary dwellings, because, as I say, tertiary dwellings had not been conceived of at that time.
But conversely, if it does say it's limited to primary and secondary dwelling or some such language like that, on the positive side, Marcus could decide that tertiary is not included.
Why would it say that if there's no such thing as a tertiary dwelling at that time?
Well, then you can't have a tertiary dwelling, and maybe he's going to interpret it that way. Leslie? We've been down this road.
I think there may have been a limitation on bedrooms per lot.
There was something.
There was something.
Maybe we can hold this until later in the meeting and look up the decision so we can settle it tonight.
Okay, we're going to hold this.
Yeah, I need to get it addressed at tonight's meeting, though, because we have a closing pending.
Leslie will find it. Won't you? All right, we're going to hold this. Arthur, for further information on that? I just remembered something on that.
It wasn't like Blackfish. It was a little different than Blackfish.
All right, we're down to previous plans now. Ed Pesci will complete his review prior to the meeting. Staff will provide a recommendation at the meeting. Leslie?
Old South Road.
Old South Road Crossing?
I don't think so.
Somebody want to make a motion, put that over to April?
I'll make that motion.
April 9th?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm recused from this, I think, anyway, so...
Is this the one you're recused from?
This is Valero.
What am I thinking?
This is Valero.
What?
Just for the moment, let me recuse.
Well, you can't come back if you're recused.
That's fine.
Leslie, was this the one that Barry recused from before? Catherine? Where is this?
Old South Road Crossing.
No, Old South Road Crossing.
Yeah.
Old South Road.
Which property exactly is that one? Leslie?
I believe there's so many of them, but I think this one is the reconfiguration of Nancy Anne Quogue Row.
Oh, oh, okay.
As for Lynn, some of them used...
There's nothing to do with yours?
Yeah, I'm just going to, let me just be on the safe side.
Okay.
Just be on the safe side.
Okay.
So, who made the motion?
So, you made the motion and John seconded. I'll just go there.
Yeah.
And to move it over to April, because the plans aren't ready. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Dyer's Estates.
This is just housekeeping.
This is housekeeping?
Kinda. Looks like it.
So, there's a Stewart Eastman running through this property that connects to the substance that no longer exists because it was purchased by the land bank.
All right.
We recommend that the board vote to allow it to be removed.
Do we have to make any decision beforehand that does need a public hearing?
Yes.
I'll make that motion at this point, that this doesn't pass the level of needing a public hearing. It'll be a minor modification.
Is there a second? All right, Barry made the motion, Catherine, and we keep doing your job for you, John. Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Barry seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You just never have to come, John. Rights Landing Clarification, Barry?
Yeah.
I can't sit down.
Okay, so, this is a Leslie thing.
All right, so, go ahead.
Leslie, you, we, can you explain this so we can just get this over with?
So, the issue is the property owner has installed pool equipment, but they did not install the shed that was approved. And the zoning officer, I believe, has made some interpretation that the way the decision was written, it wasn't either four or one of the other of both, it had to be everything. So, it had to construct the shed and the equipment and everything else in order to be eligible for the relief. So, I don't think that's really what the board intended. Certainly, I think some pool equipment is less than basic than a giant shed in the setback.
Yeah.
So, this clarification would just reword the decision to allow those to construct the shed or the mechanicals or both in the same setback.
But the whole issue with the garage is out now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, they could still construct the shed.
Okay.
But they are not planning to do that right now.
Okay.
And to remind you all, this particular side of the law is adjacent to open spaces. It's adjacent to someone's residential lot.
Yeah.
My question is, what about the exposed equipment from an HCC standpoint?
They shouldn't be...
Because when you're pulling the driveway, it's visual in the driveway, even though it's budding or land bank. So, I don't mind that pool's equipment is in the setback, however, I just want to address a fence or something like that that the HCC might want to...
That's, but we really can't defer to that. Another board for that type thing, so, I mean, that'll be up to them ultimately to have to address that on their own court.
Yeah.
I hear what you're saying. It's just, yeah, it's just not within our purview.
Don't require a fence.
Right. Did you have something, David?
Nope.
Okay. Was there anything else from the board?
If we're all clear on the issue, then what's the pleasure of the board? Is this a public hearing?
No. No, 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 this is just previous plans.
All right, so, we just need to...
Mr. Chairman, could you also, on this one, make the finding that a public hearing is not required?
Sure, absolutely, at this point. So, let's cover that territory.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay, that motion's now made and seconded, that it doesn't require a public hearing. It's a minor modification, so, and a clarification, really. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes happy unanimously. And now, pleasure of the board at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes in language for the pool house and the construction of the equipment in the setback.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yes.
Okay. Beautiful.
I'll second that.
Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes happy unanimously. Beautiful.
Okay.
Ah, these old subdivisions.
Uh-huh.
Sure. Jay, I just thought I'd get that off the table.
All right, we got Pilot Whale.
Pilot Whale's the one off of Cato, right?
No, it's right behind the Muse.
Oh, the Muse.
That's White Whale.
Oh, White Whale. Well, it's close.
Yeah, we got a lot of whales.
They wash up on the beach, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Leslie, what's going on with that?
That one is, you already covered that in the Dyer's Estates.
That's what I thought. So, is that, oh, that's on there twice? Is that what happened?
Okay, so, we can skip that then.
Phillips Run Road Cluster Subdivision Extension Request. You got a letter by email today. Does anybody have any problems with that? Somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the extension.
It was eight months, I believe, Leslie?
Yes.
Fine, second.
Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, you can go back and sit down, too. Greg Glawacki, 17 Greglin Avenue, endorsed plan legal documents. Staff recommends approval and endorsement. Any questions on that one? Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. Endorse.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we have White Elephant Resort. In a nutshell, since this is an MCD.
Yep.
What's happening?
Madam Chairman, I vote that you take no action on this tonight and that a public hearing be scheduled. The parking lot is a pre-existing nonperforming use, and the shed, the bid lot, should locate in the parking lot, would require an alteration to that use.
And take up parking spaces?
Yes.
Yes, and make it almost impossible to get into four of those spaces. If it's not floating on down Eastern Street like it has the last three weeks.
The applicant already submitted all of the paperwork for formal modifications, so we'll proceed with that.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Do we just have to continue to April, or do we have to grant, like, a bigger extension, or is this going to come in with a new application?
April.
I'm just voting to march.
Okay. All right, so, I'll make that motion to take no action on this.
And continue to April.
On 01/9. And continue to April.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Witherspoon. Staff recommends approval. Just finalizing the documents. Anybody want to comment on that one?
Wow. I want to go with that.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve and endorse the documents.
Yeah, sure. No second.
Nat seconded. Barry made the motion. Catherine? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and back away from the table. Where'd he go? He's way over there. Okay. There's some minor modifications on this also. This is minor.
Well, we...
So, we have to make a motion that it's a minor mod?
Yes, I'll make that motion, that it doesn't require a public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll give it to David this time.
Oh, no.
Nat made the motion. David seconded. Any further discussion on it's a minor mod? Doesn't need a public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and somebody make a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Now, we're down to the public hearings. I don't think we have to put Valeros on here anymore until they're ready to come in. Do we, Leslie?
I mean, it's just been there for a couple of years.
So, we know it's there? So, we don't have to make motions every time it comes in here?
That's fine.
Okay, the Nantucket Trust, it's on here twice. We've seen this quite often. They had to reapply, I believe, for parking relief.
We reapplied, yes, in order to request clarification of the parking waiver that we have and to determine what additional waivers may be necessary as far as parking is concerned.
Did you actually apply for relief under 18 or off-site?
We specifically requested that, in the application, that the parking, which, of course, comes up under 18, would be clarified.
Clarified is different than asking for a modification of the special permit.
I think it's the same thing.
Uh-uh.
It is.
When, the language, when we use clarifications, because somebody made a typo down there. If you need further parking relief because you didn't get it under one of the previous permits.
As I read the decision, there was a general parking waiver in the last decision.
Oh, I don't remember that.
And, based upon that, you know, we know we need to provide some parking. We always have provided some parking. The discussion has come up as to whether some work can be done with the town in order to provide additional parking on the lot. We're not asking for an increase in seats. We're only asking for the ability to serve lunch, because at the present time, we're limited to dinner and Sunday brunch.
All right, but the previous permit, when we expanded your seats by so many, did not give you additional parking relief, and it was our error, but you need parking relief for those extra 12 spaces or however many spaces are up front or something?
The original decision...
I wrote the original original, but I'm talking about the last one where we expanded the seats.
Expanded, the final expansion in the seats to, yet up to 60, I believe, which includes the outdoor seating.
But it didn't get a parking relief for the extra seats required? That's one of the weird things that happened.
The decision says, "Off-street parking, waiver granted. The board finds that the granting of relief would not be contrary to sound traffic, parking, or safety considerations."
Which one was that?
That's the decision that was entered on February 13, 2017.
Was it a ZVA permit, the one before that?
There was a planning board permit, there was a ZVA permit in 2000.
That one, no.
Then, which allowed the original 28 seats. Then, there was a modification by the planning board in March of 2007, but, you know, by which time this had come under planning board jurisdiction because of being a business in the Mid Island. And that allowed it to go to 40, and that's where the decision came up, allowing parking on an adjacent property.
Right.
Which was never actually accomplished. There was, there's never been a lease in place as far as that's concerned. And there is no space that's available for that purpose. And then it came in at the 2017 meeting, at which time the additional seating, twelve additional seats were allowed, using the porch and so on.
Right.
And there was a waiver granted at that time for off-street parking. The planning, the planning board issued a special permit to allow the expansion. There's language in there saying they grant modification of previously approved MCD, but it wasn't an MCD anyway.
No.
And the off-street parking waiver was included, as I just read it to you.
Under eighteen.
And that's really all it said.
Under eighteen.
Under eighteen.
And we didn't give you any off-site.
Without saying where it was being waived down to, presumably to waive it to allow the number of seats, the number of parking spaces that are there at the present time, or the parking arrangement that's there at the present time.
And clarify what it's allowed right now, dinner?
Dinner and Sunday brunch. And as I say, the whole purpose of this application and the only thing that we're asking for is the ability to serve lunch. We have no intention of doing breakfast. We can waive breakfast if that helps anybody out, but we do want to be able to serve lunch. And I would comment with regard to the whole parking situation in Mid Island, that over the last twelve or fifteen years, there has been substantial discussion of the fact that there should be shared parking rather than territorial attitudes, if we will, toward parking throughout the Mid Island area. That whole point started when the whole discussion of creation of the Mid Island, Overlay District as it was at that time, came into existence. That should be like downtown. You find a parking space, you ought to be able to keep your parking space while you go to the supermarket and the drugstore and the pet supply store and one of the restaurants in the area, rather than feeling that you have to move your car fifty yards every time that you go from one place to another. And although that's difficult to handle in some cases, because not all of the establishments that would be subject to that come before the board at any particular time and have any conditions applied to it, it is a point that this board and the planning staff have been encouraging over a period of time. As far as the ability to provide additional parking spaces using the right-of-way of Pleasant Street is concerned, we've looked at that. And again, we were initially hopeful that something might be able to be accomplished that would be beneficial across the board as far as that's concerned, but I'm not sure that's the case because there's approximately seventy-five feet of frontage, and that would only allow basically for four, actually slightly less than four, if you figure twenty-foot-long spaces, along the frontage of this property. And that would block the entrance to the existing parking area, which contains four, although not infrequently, more cars than that are put in there. The maximum number that you can dimensionally work in there is four. And so you don't really gain anything. If the pavement of Pleasant Street were not so close to the front lot line, there would be some possibilities there, but you could, and enable you to at least put two or conceivably three spaces by moving the driveway around. I don't think you'd do more than two, actually. But that would involve wiping out the sidewalk along Pleasant Street and, you know, doesn't really help the situation in terms of providing overall any additional parking for the area.
Barry?
Yep, so, Arthur, I hear you, but I'm going to challenge that because the idea was never to wipe out the sidewalk. The idea was to realign the sidewalk a lot closer to the property. The, I'd love to say that the Mid Island thing with the shared parking worked out, but boy, when you drive around, it ain't working. I know it's not grammatically correct English, but you hear what I'm saying. It really is not, it's not working as well as it should. It has, but you're right. It has become adversely territorial at times.
At times.
Yeah.
Which is unfortunate because I think that it can work. I tell you, I have parked at the Stop &amp; Shop and walked over to the drugstore. I even will admit that I've parked the drugstore and walked over to the Stop &amp; Shop, which Alan may not like, but...
Doesn't faze me one way or another.
Right. But in any event, I think that there is some sharing, and there should be more as far as that's concerned. But really, along the frontage, the problem is where the lot line is and where the edge of the pavement is. There's not room enough in there to get any parking. So you'd be encroaching on the actual traveled area of Pleasant Street at that point.
See, I hear what you're saying, but I think respectfully, when staff puts that kind of message forward about this, that there is a way to work that out, I really do. The vision for the downtown, for the Mid Island has always been to push the sidewalks back in and begin to utilize more parking so that you basically have either diagonally-based parking or like the Stop &amp; Shop, you know, side-by-side parking to do it. I'm not ready to abandon that yet in any way, shape, or form. I think that, you know, unfortunately, this is one of those things that, as much as we'd love to do it for the entire area, there are times when certain applications have come before us where we have to look at that area and just say, okay, maybe that's what we need to focus on right now, and realize that as other things come before us, we keep moving forward with it. So I, for one on this board, am not willing to let this one go yet.
Well, taking a look, you know, on that issue, and I understand where you're coming from on it, but if you take a look at that plan, the distance between the pavement of Pleasant Street and the frontage is only about seven or eight feet.
That's five spaces, they got five now.
And if you put the, put a parking area in there, you're eliminating the sidewalk. And if you, if we were to grant you an easement to have the sidewalk within our property, that takes away two parking spaces within the property. So I'm not sure that it really accomplishes anything or does very much.
Is that it, Barry, for now?
I think, I hear what you're saying. We're going to respectfully agree to disagree on this one, though, but thank you.
I have a major, major problem with this ridiculous angled backing out onto Pleasant Street. Our own bylaw says you're not allowed to back out onto Pleasant Street for a real reason. And you take somebody who can't see next to another car parked in, that's not the plan, Catherine, it's this wacky, that thing. Yeah. There's no way on this planet I'm ever going to agree to that.
I understand that.
Let me finish. You have four spaces, probably five, depending on where you put the handicap space, and that plan that we just had up there is incorrect. You're getting one space which you don't control anymore in front of your own building if it's angled parking. And if you cannot see to back out, you're going to hit somebody. That's ridiculous.
Angled parking in that location is not my idea.
Not my idea.
It was Mike's idea.
It's ridiculous.
And I understand the point, and the fact is that...
To be blunt.
We could increase the amount of parking by doing that, and if that were what we had to do in order to get our application approved, we would be willing to grant an easement to the town, which would enable parking spaces of that sort to be placed in that, in that location that way.
All you're getting is one.
We'd get one or two additional spaces overall. But I understand completely the point.
What controls those spaces? They don't control them anymore. They're not on their own property anymore. I'm going to finish. I will never personally advocate for angled parking in that location, which is one of the most highly trafficked area on Nantucket, with no visibility to back out, and you hit somebody, not doing it.
I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more.
It's ridiculous.
It wasn't my idea. It was suggested, as I say, by the transportation consultant, Mike Burns, and I was a little surprised when I saw it. I said, you know, whatever we, whatever we need to do to work with the town, we want to do. But I agree with you that, as a practical matter, considering the amount of activity in that location, how busy Pleasant Street is, that having cars backing out as opposed to parallel parking, which I think is fine, would be a real problem in that area.
Because you have four that you control. You would not control these five spaces.
Right.
You have, so you'd have no parking?
No par, other than...
On-site?
Yeah. Other than on the side.
So right now, you have four with a fairly substantial island in between that and the path to travel on Pleasant Street. There may be ways to get six more, you know, two more in there and make six in there.
Now, take a look at the plan, though, at the Blackwell site plan. It was up a minute ago, and I have additional copies if you want. The, that's not it. It's the plot, you know, the locust plan that we filed with the application.
And those spaces weren't right either. That, why does he have a huge space over there, not next to the ramp? This was all a deal that was worked out with the AAB at the state. The handicap space is supposed to be right there where number one is, not over there.
Didn't fit there.
Well, that's where they told him to put it, at the bottom of the ramp.
But the problem is that it doesn't, that, as you can see, to get the width, the nine-foot width of a parking space on the other parking space.
Then we have substantial problem.
The additional width, the thirteen-foot width for the handicap space, the only place you can stick it is up there, as shown up there.
Or make this, get rid of some of that island. The only problem with that, Arthur, is it moved away from the bottom of the ramp. And that's what was, that was negotiated with the AAB many, many years ago when they put the ramp on.
And apparently, nobody took into consideration at that time, the dimensions. It's what happens when you have matters coming in before boards, whether it be the planning board or the AAB or whoever it is, without properly surveyed plans.
Plus, you're entitled to one in the back where that loading zone used to be. Well, I'm not going this direction, but we have to come up with another solution. Because I'm having trouble, the original approvals were all predicated, and I was on the ZBA back in the eighties. The original approvals were predicated on people having different timing when they were open. The henhouse was restricted to closing, it likes ridiculously at seven or eight o'clock at one point. The chicken box started to pick up. The henhouse had to get parking leased from the chicken box, which they did for many years. You guys were open at a time when the henhouse wasn't really going great guns, and the chicken box was open. All the parking sort of works symbiotically. Now, because of the way Mid Island has developed over the last thirty years, that's, you're asking to expand the service into big time when Island Kitchen is now roaring and they own all their parking. This was, obviously, has been discussed every time this matter has come in now, under this particular application. So I'm still having a problem with that. Anybody else have any questions? David?
Yeah, my, one of my problems is that you never fulfilled the requirement from the first special permit to get the off-site parking, and you still don't have that.
There was never a formal arrangement, there was, as I understand it, an oral understanding with Alan Bell, that the spaces over at the drugstore would be able to be used, at least there would be no enforcement against their being used. That's no longer in effect. The question was whether parking spaces could be obtained over on the lot owned by the chicken box on the other side of the drugstore, and that's not possible. That can't be worked out with the chicken box because, among other reasons, they have an arrangement with NERTA as far as that area is concerned. And so the result is that there is, as a practical matter, no ability to fulfill that. And again, I wasn't around when the thing was put in place originally, but there never in any event has been any formal arrangement as far as that's concerned. That's the way it is.
Maybe Nantucket Community Sailing has an extra lot there you could park up. You could lease from them.
Hi, I'm Chip. Just a comment, Arthur. Looking at the discussion for adequate parking, I'm all for having extended hours and lunches. I think we need more places, especially in the off-season open, in the off-season open. However, one of the comments is, is the intensity of the proposed restaurant used consistent with the prior waivers and/or are there considerations for daytime operations? Things, things have changed. The intensity has changed. We're looking at Island Kitchen and the popularity and the busy hours of their operation. They did go out and buy extra parking for that, and I think we're looking, there, it clearly is an intensity issue that would be affected by adding lunch hours. So although I'm for it in principle, I think the client really needs to find a way to secure parking, whether it be through a formal agreement with Allen next door or, as David says, something with Community Sailing. I think they really have to address the parking issue instead of just adding extra hours without really meeting a demand.
Yeah, I mean, I happen to know, I'm involved, of course, with Nantucket Community Sailing, and I know that the plan is ultimately going to be to, the possibility that we'll use it for our own purposes, but probably we're going to sell it. And can't really make any commitment based upon that. I don't, I don't think that there's any practical solution in terms of getting any additional parking as a practical matter. Of course, there's a question as to what's going to happen, which we don't know at this point, across the street, you know, at the present fire station, but I assume that there'll be some development of that site that will, that will need to utilize its own area for parking for itself.
I understand, I'm just a little concerned about giving a decision based on this in the future.
I understand.
Carol?
Just had a couple of quick comments and one suggestion for a possible idea. Can we do parallel parking like the other side of the street? It's a little bit easier to get out if you look over your left shoulder, go in in that direction, look in your mirror than the angles. Go take those parallel spots and run them from West Creek Road all the way past Dave Street to connect with the parallel spots in front of Cape Cod Five. I don't know if that's a workable solution. I don't know how many spots it would make. I thought about the fire department, if that's redeveloped. I know it doesn't really help this year, but could be some parking available for Mid Island in that section if the building's torn down or something. The other thing I wanted to suggest, it might be a possible solution, perhaps staff has already looked into this. When the hospital's finished, there's a large tract of land there between the Boys Club and the Sanford Boat Building. I don't know if it could be a parking lot for Mid Island or fix the sidewalks going up, or if it's going to be total private. I don't know.
Stop &amp; Shop has control of it, and they've got a plan coming to us.
Okay, well, then that settles that, but maybe there could be some kind of mixed use with a parking lot for people if they could walk. I don't know how they could deal with inclement weather, walking from there down to the restaurants and stuff, but just suggestion.
Yeah, I understand that there are, you know, limited possibilities, basically, though, in terms of what can be done. Again, the parallel parking on Pleasant Street is something, when I first heard about the idea, I thought would be great, and you take a look at the plan, and the pavement of Pleasant Street at the present time is so relatively close to the lot line that there isn't room enough in between. And as I say, we would gladly allow for part of the frontage of the Nantucket Trust property to be joined with town property and utilized for that purpose, but the width just isn't there, as I say. If we moved, you know, even disregarding the fact that there's a sidewalk there, if we moved the parking into that location and moved into our lot at all, we're squeezing out a parking space that's already in the lot. As you can see on Jeff Blackwell's plan, the spaces, as he's laying them out, a nine-by-twenty dimension are basically right at the lot line.
Plus, you'd lose the handicap space that's on your property that you're required to have by the state. And I don't mind parallel parking, running all the way from the corner of West Creek, you know, get rid of that island in between you and us somewhat, and that'll be a little bit more space there. I think parallel parking is fine. But there's a reason why our own bylaw says no backing out onto Pleasant Street. There's a list, there's a list of maybe twenty roads that you don't back out on because of this road situation.
And I agree with you, we're not proposing that. I'm just saying...
You're going to bring this up. Mike brought it up.
And I'm thinking that you could put parallel parking, perhaps, in front of the Island Pharmacy, and then on the gravel lot there next to the chicken box, put a few spots in there up to Dave Street.
Certainly next to Lucky's.
I'm just sort of thinking out loud, but I'm sure you folks are already up on this, so...
Certainly next to Lucky's. There's dead space there. They don't even deliver there anymore like they did way, way back when Demo had it. They're just dead space. Okay, Barry?
Yeah, did you, I'm sorry.
I got a couple of things. Mr. Bambus had his hand up when there is it...
Well, not in public yet.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
So I just want to make sure everybody up here is comfortable to let it go for now.
So, Arthur, you know, these things kill me. We talk more about this than we do about real stuff. It's amazing. What all the improvements have been made on, as Linda said earlier, Barry said, we've done it one place at a time, but they've come in for a major MCD, like Dan's, we couldn't fix, I think you were on that, we couldn't fix it, then we got the land from, you know, the Cape Cod Five thing, got that all sorted out, and we jiggled the stuff around, and now we make it easy to turn in. I mean, we fixed a lot of things, but this spot in Lucky's, it's the same as it was before we knew what Mid Island was.
Right.
Okay? And it, those four spaces, Arthur, you know, you have to use like a helicopter to park there. You know that. I mean, it's kind of, it fits, but it's not, people can't drive like that. It's just, you got to be like pretty good.
You could do it.
I could do it.
I've parked in there many times.
Maybe the first car. So you got to back in from the street to do it. So I understand what you're saying. Haven't we done a plan to get rid of all the vegetation? We talked about that the last meeting. If we blew up all that vegetation, because it's doing nothing, and just added some spaces around the corner, we could continue those spaces that are there on the side with the, you know, the fence thing has there.
The vegetation where?
On the corner and in the front. The island thing, and it kind of goes around a little bit.
No.
And it's sort of like, that's a couple spaces. I mean, I'm just...
Yeah.
The thing is that this isn't an Arizona application where you got a flat piece of dirt and you can make it work. It's sort of, all they're asking for is lunch, and we're talking about something that's, they're not going to do all this work. And this is a lot. I mean, they get it, you got to get Lucky's to give up their land, get your owners, the real owners of the property, to give up their land and make, make parking for the public. Now, that's the point I want to make, that Linda, I kind of, I don't know if I'm disagreeing with her or not on this, but making public spaces sometimes is better than making private impractical spaces, in my opinion, especially here. We're not downtown, but we're kind of, some more, some of it is similar to the issues that are downtown. You have pocket places that can have their own parking, but not everybody can. Everybody uses Stop &amp; Shop. What if Stop &amp; Shop was out there saying, "Where are you going tonight? You're not going shopping, we're closed," and they closed the parking lot? Wouldn't that be nice? So you see what I mean? So I just, like, I don't know. I don't like the plan because it's not real. I, I look at the Island Pharmacy and remember when it was a restaurant, and this was a restaurant three names ago, or four.
Yeah.
I think, four.
Three.
I don't know. It's, the chicken box leasing thing is probably the only practical answer to this because it's the only place that's kind of hanging out.
But it's not available.
Not available. But everybody uses it to go to Stop &amp; Shop for free. You see what I'm saying?
I'd like to get a public comment.
I just don't know what the answer is, so...
There is a potential that's been discussed twenty, twenty-some-odd years ago, and a lot of people don't want to agree with it, but make it a one-way.
Nope.
That was an old idea.
One-way coming the opposite way on Sparks.
Off a lunch?
You may enable yourself to have angled parking because you're no longer doing a two-way traffic.
That was an idea that, you know, that's been out there.
I agree, Jen, I remember that. I'm just saying, off a lunch? It's just a expensive lunch.
All right, guys, this is a public hearing. Barry, one more comment, and then I'm going out there.
All right, so let's boil it down to a few things. As one person on this board, yes, viability of what is Mid Island is really a great thing. From what it was to where it is today and what it keeps going to want to be, it's becoming the next downtown core district unequivocally. No question about it. And for several, I was sitting on several different boards, we may, we need to kind of maintain that vision in mind. Even what we've talked about with initially the Mid Island area, maybe it's time to reconvene that and take another snapshot and see what's going on with it. So I, this is not an easy decision, sitting here. I really believe that that would be a great thing to see this lunch thing happening. But in its current configuration with where we're at right now... But in its current configuration with where we're at right now, and how busy things have gotten in that area, I'm not sure I see it working. I see it becoming a big problem than I do even neutral, shall we say. The current parking out in front really boggles my mind. It's not workable parking in my book. It's great if you have four minis in there, but the moment you start moving into regular cars, it becomes dicey.
I got in there. It was hard.
Are you done?
I got in there.
All right, you've asked people not to interrupt, now come on.
I got in there.
Come on. But I am going to challenge you in something, here you go. You said that angled parking doesn't work, so I really want to hear your plan for what you're going to do for Main Street downtown. Because that is one of the busiest streets, and that's where angled parking does exist at this point. So let's challenge that assumption a little bit.
They're not moving this fast.
Hold on.
Oh, come on.
Come on, just hold on.
Can I hear my thoughts on that?
Barry?
Yeah, but I'm just saying to you, okay? Barry? I mean, I'd really like to hear from staff and their perspective on this a little bit, too. Because, I mean, they've drafted it up, they've thought about it, this is something that I think can be a workable solution, and I would really like to hear from staff on it. So Wesley, if you don't mind.
Wasn't Wesley's plan.
Okay, so, you know, at the last meeting, I think I brought up that, you know, even though we're not talking about more seats, we are talking about intensity increase. And the shared parking and all of that works fine when there's staggered hours of operation. But introducing lunch service to an area when everything's open and there's not enough parking, you know, may be problematic. And particularly considering they don't have enough spaces for the current number of seats on their site now. So, you know, the Mid Island area plan was approved by town meeting in 2003, and one of the objectives was to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment in the Mid Island, to slow down parking on Pleasant and some of the other streets by creating, you know, bigger sidewalks, on-street parking, that kind of thing.
Shared parking laws.
Shared parking. So creating some kind of on-street parking would be consistent with the plan. Now, this is a site where they don't have a lot of room to create more parking just for their use. You know, maybe we need more time to talk about the on-street parking option. Because if we just go with the parallel route, it's not even as many spaces as they already have on their site now, it would be possibly even less. So, you know, they have head-in, parallel parking on streets all over the United States, and it works just fine. I mean, I don't see why it couldn't work here, but maybe that needs more thought.
I think the difference between downtown Main Street and this, as far as angled parking is concerned, is that Main Street has, although it's heavily traveled, it's slowly traveled because it's cobblestone, which slows people down. And for better or worse, people do come zipping through on Pleasant Street. I mean, it's a fairly smooth paved road, fairly wide road by Nantucket standards, and, you know, the possibility for accidents and for somebody starting to back out and then realizing that somebody's bearing down on them before they can do anything about it is a significant issue. And I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not a traffic expert, I just, you know, see what I see.
Works out fine.
And if it would resolve the issue, and if the board would be comfortable with our working out some, any type of parking arrangement in conjunction with the town, regardless of whether it be parallel, angle, or any other kind of arrangement that could be imagined, we'd be happy to do it, even if that involves subsuming some of the area in front of the property that's now used for parking. But I think the bottom line is that on parallel parking, there is no overall parking gain, and it becomes
Public.
Very difficult. I mean, it could be done, we could put the four spaces there, and it would involve giving up the existing spaces within our property. The overall number of spaces in the area winds up being the same, four. They may be better spaces, I don't think there's any question that they'd be better spaces than the layout that exists at the present time, but it's not an overall gain. But to the extent that we could do that, and that that would involve our granting uneasement to the town so that those spaces could be partially on our property, and there would be, therefore, the ability to keep a sidewalk and to not narrow down the paved, traveled area of Pleasant Street to less than it is now, we'd be more than happy to do that. And if you would like, we could come back to the next meeting, we could prepare, I could have Jeff prepare a plan that would show that, at least for discussion purposes.
There's no net gain. There's a reason why we put the bylaw in place and voted not to allow backing out on Pleasant Street. And now there's some sort of a wackadoodle proposal to back out twelve, fourteen spaces. I have a major problem with that because there's a reason why we said no backing out. So we're going to move past this. I don't think we're going to solve it here right now. This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience wish to speak? Rhonda? I see you up there, Ron.
For the record, Rhonda Martin, I represent Patrick Ridge, who owns Island Kitchen at One Chin's Way and Two Chin's Way. And as you know, this has been going on for a very long time. The application that was, did you give him one? Just take one for mostly. The application asking for clarification of prior decisions regarding parking, I find a little bit troublesome. If you read all of the decisions, there's no question, it's crystal clear. And what I tried to do is summarize it for you. I think you all have a copy of it now. But just very briefly, February fifteenth, two thousand, at the Zoning Board of Appeals, they came in for thirty-two seats that were denied, and the board at that point approved twenty-eight-seat restaurant. There were ten spaces required at that time, and five were waived. Okay, so that was ten spaces, five were waived. March twelfth, two thousand and seven, it came before the planning board, planning board added twenty seats, so there were now forty-eight seats. No additional parking was required at that time. There was then an agreement, and there was a written agreement with the then-owner of the building that's now Island Pharmacy, whereby the restaurant customers could park in those spaces. However, that agreement and the language from the planning board decision on March twelfth of two thousand and seven was crystal clear. It ran only to that owner and no other owner. So when that restaurant sold and the new owner took over, that new owner or the owner of that property was supposed to come before this board and talk about parking one more time. That never happened. So right away, we have a violation of the special permit that was issued in March twelfth of two thousand and seven. Two thousand and seventeen, February thirteenth, it came before the planning board again. There was no mention that there was a violation of the previous special permit. Didn't even get mentioned, didn't even get brought up. They then added twelve additional spaces. And now they're up to sixty seats. They require of sixty seats, and the employees and the apartment, they should have fourteen parking spaces. They are not even remotely close to fourteen parking spaces, as you've already heard. I would ask that you turn down any further applications that are before you now and that come in in the future until they deal with the parking situation. It's been a problem. As you know, my client purchased the building behind Island Kitchen just for the parking, that was his sole purpose. Prior to that, he had an agreement with the chicken box for parking. Even with just Island Kitchen alone and not the second building, he had an agreement for additional parking. It's not even remotely fair to think that he should share the parking. He has allowed their parking at night because his biggest crowds are breakfast and lunch, and he's let them park there at night. He's let their trucks unload at night during the day. The trucks come in with all of their assorted things that they order, they go right into his parking lot. They don't go into anything else because there's no place else to go. It's not fair. He had a lease when he didn't have that second building, that's what they should get now. It's not this board's problem to turn around and try to find them a space. You got approval that, or not an approval, but you got a plan from your parking person, you should look at that, and at least pay attention to that, because even if we can't do parallel parking, we need to do something. But to ask Patrick to provide parking for this is absurd, and you should absolutely not allow them to open for lunch. For any of you that go to that restaurant, and I'm sure all of you have been there, the parking lot's always crowded for breakfast and lunch, and even his patrons can't always get in there. So to think about adding another restaurant that will slip in there and have their customers park there is absolutely inappropriate. So I would ask you to turn this down, not to continue it. It's been continued twice now. Turn it down and let them come back with something that works. Thank you.
Ron?
It's Ron Bamber.
You got to come down to the microphone.
Please.
But it's for the TV.
Ron Bamber, can you hear?
Yep.
I would say if you let backing out parking on Pleasant Street, that would be the worst thing ever. Ridiculous. I own three properties on West Creek Road and Orange Street, and every one of my places has enough parking. I've been renting the kitties for twelve or fourteen years. If they wanted parking, they should have bought those vacant lots that were next to the chicken box for a whole year for sale. Backing out into the street, like Barry said, may be absolutely ridiculous. That's all I can say. You gotta make them have enough parking or forget it. And as far as West Creek Road, parallel parking there, we just got through that nightmare. I have the dentist office here, the green was parking in my places. You know what the lady at the green said? That's your problem. That's what you get. So I take care of a lot of parking there, and I'm nice, but you can't let people go and, like you said, back down to the street, ridiculous. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Bamber, can I just say one thing to you?
Sure.
I understand what you're saying, but when people try to back into parallel spaces, they block traffic.
You can't back in, I agree, like you said.
I'm just saying, that's why we got them to flush that curving down, coming out of that parking lot, because people are trying to jiggle in, blocking traffic, everybody's honking. So angled parking is easy when in and out, you don't have to do all kinds of crazy stuff to get into the space. That's all I'm saying.
Yep, I'm saying Main Street's great.
You didn't knock it round about, now everybody wants them, just so you know.
I could say that for this. I'm not knocking around about.
Everybody hated it when it was going to come out.
All right, all right. This is not a roundabout discussion. Stay on track.
I am on track.
Ed?
Ed Lombard for the record.
Go ahead and put it right up.
Okay.
Put it over there.
Yeah, just move it.
Okay, there you go. I know of two restaurants that have a valet service. Could this be a consideration for their parking issue? Just an idea.
It's up to the head.
I don't know about the daytime, but maybe nighttime, but.
Is that something that you have jurisdiction over? Sorry about that.
Usually that stuff's out of town.
Out of town?
Usually, I mean.
Nat.
Well, just an idea.
I don't know.
Thank you. I see a hand up up there.
Hi, Campbell Sutton. Am I on? Yeah, okay. Anyway, I just wanted to, two things. One, the parallel parking I just see as a problem, for one main reason. I think that Pleasant Street is also a thoroughfare, unlike Main Street where you take a right, and most of the people that are going up Main Street are looking for you to back out.
That's true.
So they're like, yeah, are you backing out? Great, I'll wait for you. So that really simplifies sort of the coming and going there. But Pleasant, that street is used to get to the other side of the island, so if you're coming from Wisconsin, I mean, I work, so whatever, and I think there's a lot of people that do that. If you try and use Orange Street as your way through to avoid the summertime traffic with angled parking and parallel parking on Pleasant right there at Stop &amp; Shop, now you've put all this pressure on the side roads there because Orange Street doesn't take you effectively through town. Now you're going to have everybody popping up on Bear Street, or they're going to be going at, you know, where the fast forward is, you'll go down to there, and then everyone takes a left, and then hooks back on to Pleasant. And I think that it just really compounds traffic in that area. And the parallel parking on Pleasant at Stop &amp; Shop is really enough of a traffic stop, if you, slower downer, because as people are trying to back into spaces, as Nat said, you know, people are trying to get around them, and traffic's trying to come the other way. So I think it's just a block. And to the businesses' point, it seems like an awful lot of an expense to go through to create public parking, which does not ensure that anyone that parks there is going to lunch at your establishment. So I'm not sure, like, how they gain adding lunch, but really taking away spaces, so that's all.
That was my point. Good point.
But they're improving.
For who?
Which are the public.
Okay, anybody else in the public want to comment on this matter? We got a couple of ways to go here. We can keep hanging on, waiting for some sort of a plan or a solution, or working it out with town. I'm never going to go for angled parking, ever. Parallel, I think is great. But we can keep going, they can withdraw until they come with some plan, we can deny without prejudice, and they can come back. When they do have a plan, so we can continue this ad nauseam, or we can go one of the other two ways. David, any idea where you want to go?
I'd just soon get it settled.
Which way?
I think we should close the public hearing.
If that's what you want to do. Otherwise, if we're going to wait around and have them come back with another plan, we don't close the public hearing. John, comment?
Hold on.
Arthur?
Yeah, if I might, I would like to take a shot at coming back to the next meeting, continuing to the next meeting, and showing what a parallel parking plan utilizing some of this lot would involve. You know, we're not going to gain any parking spaces as a result of it, but it would involve what I think, you know, everybody is agreeing would be a better parking arrangement than what exists at the present time, and it would be a step in the right direction in terms of being able to provide a row of parking, as Carla was talking about, all along that whole strip between, you know, West Creek and, say, Dave Street.
Do you have any intention of having a reasonable conversation with Patrick and Rhonda about the parking situation, sharing parking?
I, I.
That has not occurred.
There have been, well, we've had a discussion, and the proposals that they made are not acceptable to us.
Yeah, three months ago.
Yeah. The one thing we agree upon is there's a question as to whether the.
Five spaces on the side.
Whether we were paying our fair share of maintenance of the roadway.
You don't pay anything.
And I was told, our tenant told us that she's been paying. If that's not the case, we're perfectly willing to agree that maintenance of the roadway should be shared. I mean, if Patrick wants to go out and get it plowed tomorrow, send us a bill and we'll kick in. But.
But I think you need to have a more productive discussion. We've asked for it a couple of times, we brought it up at this meeting the last couple of times, that you need to have a productive discussion with the sharing of the parking issue, particularly those five spaces that are partially on your property on the Chin's Way side. But I think there hasn't been enough conversation between you guys that's reasonable. Rhonda, you want to say something? Rhonda, you want to say something?
Please. I went to Mr. Reed several weeks ago with a proposal. He never got back to me, ever. I heard from, via the planning board that he wasn't gonna accept it. My client, Mr. Ridge, went to the owner of the property, has called her several times. He most recently called her two and a half weeks ago. She told him she'd get right back to him. She got back to him two weeks later and said, quote, "I'm too busy to meet with you." I would beg you not to continue this. This has been going on. And what didn't come up with any of you is there was a violation of the special permit. And, you know, David mentioned it. He mentioned it at the last meeting. I mean, everybody's overlooked the fact that they had a special permit that they're in violation of. And to now come back for the third time on this one application and give them an opportunity to do something when they've done absolutely nothing for the last three months that this has been going on, I would respectfully request that you turn this down now. And if they want to come back with something else, let them come back with it. But please turn this down. This has gone on way too long and there's been no, nothing on the other side trying to make this work. Thank you.
It needs to be pointed out that the tenants of the building, Atlas, is not the owner of the building.
Right, right.
And we're referring to Barbara Rubin or whoever these days.
Barbara Lewis.
Asked it by my client.
Yeah, so that, so that there's, there's a disconnect.
She says that's not what the conversation was, but that's.
But there is a disconnect. I want it on the record, there's a disconnect possibly between the people that are actually operating the business, who are not the people that own the building and are not the people that necessarily knew all about every one of these permits in the past. Because there have been three restaurants in there in between. And I, there's probably a disconnect with them understanding what the permit said, who is responsible for the permit. And the Rubens have had that building since it was fully, since we did the first permit. So, and Patrick and Rhonda are trying to talk to Barbara and Atlas is in the building and they're the ones that need the parking for their business. So there's a lot of aspects of this that make it even more complicated. But we haven't gotten very far in the last three months.
We've called the end.
Madam Chair.
John.
Even with negotiations and buying the parking or renting the parking, does not go to the core of the matter that it doesn't expand parking, it doesn't add parking. So even if Patrick was compensated, that's great. But however, we're not adding the parking. So we're not really addressing the crux of the problem.
Yeah, and the issue is not happening because he never has been, and that's not the issue. The issue is, he doesn't want the parking. Simple as that.
And we've never, by the way, claimed that we have the right to park in his, either.
The five spaces on the side are an issue. The five spaces on the side have been a bone of contention way back in the first, absolutely the first decision, because I did the first decision.
I would be inclined not to continue. I would say deny without prejudice because I would, I would suggest that if in the future the owner has a way to establish parking somewhere else.
Or with the town.
Then they should come back before the board.
Or with the town, you know.
With the town, other options.
With any entity.
Yeah.
Lockes.
Thank you.
The side of Lockes.
Sure.
So what's your pleasure, to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, Nat made a motion to close the public hearing. John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what's your pleasure, Ron, this one?
I would like to make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Second.
Leslie, is that the way you want it formed or do you want it formed in a positive and not get enough votes?
That's fine. That's the way you want to word it.
You want to go with the negative? Because I know the ZBA, we always make positive motions and then not get enough votes. How do you want to do this for the decision?
No, I think this is better. Less confusing.
Just a denial, straight denial?
Correct.
Okay. Nat's made a motion, or John made a motion to deny without prejudice.
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Of the denial.
I don't oppose.
Okay. It's a four in favor of denial and one opposed to the denial. Barry.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
I like this turning to Judge Judy.
Judge Pirro from Fox, that's what it is. The 17 Broad Street, this was part of the attempts to get actual occupancy for other restaurants. Does anybody have an issue with this one?
No.
All right, this is a public hearing. Does anybody want to have a comment? Okay, saying none, do you want to make a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
All right, Barry made a motion to close the public hearing. Nat made a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Somebody make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Nat seconded, Barry made it, Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Nogga Trust was part of the other one. Do I have to deal with this one, Leslie? This was the second application?
You do need to deal with it. Yeah, so take a vote on that.
Okay, this.
I thought it was wrapped up with your other vote.
It was. Is that, was that the intent, to do both of these at the same time, guys?
I thought you opened both of the public hearings. I've known them for a long time. I thought you opened both of the public hearings.
We took them together.
Then we'll just clarify in the decision.
Okay.
All right.
All right, Homicide 167, this is the fish market. And the applicant is taking a special permit to locate a portion of the acquired parking on a donation lot, adjacent lot. I believe the adjacent lot is where the greenhouses are.
That's correct. For the record, Attorney John Brescher, representing owner 167 Homick Pond Road LLC. And that is correct. The adjacent parking would be, what is located at 165 Homick Pond Road. And that's where the greenhouses are on the Powers property.
You want to explain what they're doing? Because they never had outdoor seating per se when I was a kid.
They want, they are having more takeout, for lack of a better term, so they have, I believe, so they're going to add 24 seats. They're going to do everything in their power to encourage pedestrian traffic. Believe it or not, the NRTA doesn't run all the way out there.
Well.
I know.
Why does it stop?
It stops on the corner of Somerset Lane and Homick Pond Road. So we are in the process of petitioning traffic safety to put a crosswalk between.
The bike path.
The bike path in there and encourage more, more bicycle traffic.
Well, that's kind of ridiculous. Doesn't bother them at Cisco.
Right. And they are also going to have a food truck on site. And so with the food truck, more seating.
Okay.
And so with more seating, more parking and more bike racks, et cetera.
But it's not table service. It's still.
No, that's right.
You go in it and you sit at, sit at the picnic tables that they have.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Okay, board members. Staff recommended, I believe, approval. Leslie, were there any conditions of anything on this? I didn't want the.
No, I suppose only the condition would be that they maintain these, for the offset plan.
Any questions from the board?
No.
This is a public hearing. Anybody have any comments? Saying none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Barry made a motion to close the public hearing. Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Motion for an approval.
Barry made a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You've had a very short night, John. Ken Gullikson, staff recommended approval on this. This is the differential between the primary and secondary dwelling. It's well in the back. If anybody's been up to the end of Pond View, what is it called? Pond View Drive. It's probably the last lot roughly down on the left, isn't it, Ken?
Second to last.
Second to last. Lot of trees, big lot. Anybody on the board have any questions?
I'm surprised we don't get more of these.
We will. Any questions from the board? Public comment?
I'd like to speak.
Take it while you can, Ken. But it's the applicant.
Kenneth Gullikson, this is a personal matter for me on my lot. I just want, we're looking to move a house from down the street to our lot. The house is slightly bigger than ours, but not 20 percent. But it is longer, so it appears bigger, so I think it fits within the meaning, intent of the bylaw. The reason I want to speak is that the, I have three different plot plans that give three different ground covers for this. The newest one just was done about a week ago. It's 1,312 square feet. My house is 1,227. The foundation plan and the assessor's records show the house to be moved at 1,200 square feet. I think part of that difference is because the foundation is surrounded by a fairly thick foam insulation that adds to the ground cover, but it's not part of the, we haven't designed our foundation yet, so I'm not sure what our ground cover will be. So I just want to make sure that there isn't a vote to allow the 9 percent that's mentioned in the notice.
That gives you enough leeway? The 9 percent between the two?
The 9 percent is based upon the plot plan that I submitted with the application in my, but again, it could be different. I just would like to be able to move this house. And if the ground cover turns out to be different, I don't want to have to come back.
I just don't want you to have to come back if it's 8.5 percent.
Well, it could be, I mean, based on the newest one, it's about 7 percent. But again, it could be smaller if this foam isn't used, if it's insulated on the inside.
Leslie, what does that do for us on the public notice?
I believe the public notice, it lists 9 percent, that's okay. Catherine.
It says 9.2 in the addendum.
Right. But I don't.
If the notice is okay.
It doesn't say, it doesn't ask for relief for 9 percent.
Okay.
I usually write the public notice in a certain way. 26 percent between primary and secondary dwelling, from 20 percent to approximately 9 percent. Approximately.
Marcus looks at approximately as less than 0.6. I've already been down that road, 0.5.
0.5 percent?
Mm-hmm. That's plus or minus.
Should we change 9 to something?
Plus or minus is one or two inches.
Eight?
So relative.
That's what he does to everybody.
So there's two things. So relative to the public notice, the public notice only has to describe the nature of what is the request. So I would say approximately is, you know, the nature is it's being requested to be reduced from 20 percent to something. So that might be something we can work with them, but the decision, you know, whatever that says is the number that the zoning enforcement officer is going to hold them to.
So.
So I think, you know, 9 percent, 7 percent, that's.
That's a big difference.
9 percent, 8 percent, maybe not.
We could be more loosey-goosey and go anywhere between 7 percent and 9 percent of a difference and just, or a minimum, or a minimum of 7 percent and keep it away from nailing it to a particular percentage, but give him some wiggle room. When do you have to move that building by?
We don't have a date yet.
Okay. Because it's within the same subdivision, so it's not overland terribly.
Right.
How do you want to do this, Leslie? Nobody has a problem with it on the board, right?
No.
No.
The only thing I'm gonna say is if you advertised it that way, though, I'd be a little careful here.
That's what I'm worried about.
About what the final end resultant is in terms of what that differential is. Just saying, it went out as a public notice.
Yeah. I couldn't get away with that at the ZBA at all.
Madam Chairman, for you, what's the difference in square footage between 9 percent and 7 percent?
It's a sizable lot, Ken. How big is the lot?
37 square feet.
Fairly minimal.
We just have to write it correctly.
How about greater than 7 percent? I don't think I'd have one of these.
Or a minimum of a 7 percent differential. That'll get you there.
If, if 9 percent was a huge, if there's a huge number of difference between 9 percent and 7 percent, I would be more concerned about it. But if we're talking about 30 square feet, is that?
What's the square?
Is that approximately?
Oh, see, they're measuring it to a foundation like mine. Mine has nine inches of foam insulation on the outside of it.
Yeah.
As opposed to the foundation wall. That's around a big house, that's quite a lot of footage.
But what's the overall square footage?
For.
Just to get the difference.
The latest plot plan that just, was just done last week, shows the house to be moved is 1,312 square feet.
Okay.
The house on the lot now, according to that plot plan, is 1,227.
Well, 1 percent of 1,340 is 13 feet, roughly. So it's not a big swing. It's 7 to 9.
Nobody, nobody really cares about it here, but just for the purposes of writing a decision and the notice, that's what we're talking about, is semantics, basically.
You know, I'm just saying, so perhaps it would be a percentage plus or minus a certain number of square feet.
And, Madam Chair, we're talking about the foundation and whether or not there's foam around it or not. I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure it's even measured, but we're not talking about the size of the structure itself changing. It's effectively below grade. I think we can work some language.
Not a below grade. Mine is above grade by three feet. And they measure, constantly measure my square footage wrong because I have nine inches of polystyrene on the outside of my basement wall. So I've already, I've been down the same road that he's going down right now.
Ground covers.
So whatever we do on a decision basis, I want to make sure it covers you. So we can, we can still approve it with the determination in the office as to what the differential is. Does that work? Otherwise, we're all just staring at each other up here.
I mean, he's the last.
Yeah, I think when we address it from a, from a notice standpoint, approximate should be okay for us to decide. And then once we make a decision for the 7 to 9 percent, then that would probably be more exact with Marcus at the zoning board. So I think we can make that, that 26 square feet or whatever it is, the difference between that 2 percent.
I just know at the ZBA, I couldn't have gotten away with that. But Leslie, how do you want to do it?
Well, I think we should put some, you know, flexible language in the decision. But again, if anyone read the notice and they came in and they looked at the file, the plan that they see is still the plan. Whether or not there's been some, you know, change to the calculation, the, you know, the layout of the house, the overall, like, living space, excuse me, hasn't changed.
Fine, but we just have to figure out how to write it. So somebody want to make, somebody'd like to make, is there anybody else in the audience you'd like to speak? who'd like to speak? All right, somebody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Some.
David made a motion to close the public hearing. Nat, did you second it?
Seconded, yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to approve any decrease in the 20% differential to a number to be determined between staff and the applicant?
I'll make that motion.
David seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm opposed.
Barry's opposed, on a technical issue.
On a technical issue only.
Yep, I got it.
Yep.
If this was ZBA, I would have done that. Mercifully, I'm not there anymore. The Westmore Club is being continued to April 9th. Do you want us to make a motion on that, Leslie, or just let it go?
Just let it go.
Okay. I'm going to back up for a second. The action plan on Dan Tuckett Trust was today, or yesterday? Did we get an extension?
You're talking about back on 108?
I'm back on 130 Pleasant Street. I was going to bring it up, I circled it at the time. It says action deadline 3/11/18.
They submitted a, an action deadline extension.
They did, okay.
Did we? Okay. That's not what this...
They submitted a modification, so...
All right, that's, that's not what this says, just saying. Okay, Hawthorne Park.
Chair, I think I recuse.
Both you and I have to recuse.
What are we doing?
It's the three of you.
Yep.
And Barry, you can implement somebody over there.
Yeah, I will, when we get down to the actually...
John, sit back with me.
Both of you are going to be on this at this point. I'm sorry, hang on. One, two, three, yeah, we're high. Thank you.
This is a special permit.
Yeah, absolutely, this is a special permit, so I'm going to need the whole compliment here for a moment. All right, so 1418, which is, I'm sorry, 1318, which is Hawthorne Park, L.A. State. Leslie, you want to lead off the discussion?
Sarah's here, represent...
Oh, sorry, Sarah, please, hi. Forgive me.
That's all right. Sarah Alter for the applicant. These applicants purchased two adjacent lots in the Hawthorne Park subdivision, Lot 71 and Lot 72. They're going to build a primary, they're building currently a primary dwelling on Lot 72. They plan to build another primary dwelling on Lot 71, but in the meantime, they want to build their garage first and use it in conjunction with the primary on Lot 72.
Mm-hmm.
The bylaw provides that you can do that, you can have a garage as, a residential garage as your primary use with a special permit, and that's what we're asking to do. They don't want to, obviously, they bought these lots as separate, buildable lots, so they don't want to merge them just to put a 300-square-foot, one-car, one-story garage on, but that is their plan.
Okay. Board members, any questions?
No.
Leslie, anything from your perspective?
No.
No. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this?
Thank you, motion to close. Oh, oh, there we go, sorry, sorry.
I don't know if I want to comment on it.
Just introduce yourself at the ready again.
Campbell Sutton.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, I, I just have a question on it, really, as I was looking at it. Is this like a regular car garage, or does this become like a one-bedroom studio garage?
Sarah.
No, it's a, it's a one-bedroom. It's, actually, it's 15 feet, six and a quarter inches tall, and it's only 308 square feet on the ground. It's on a slab, it has, I've given you the, they could have a dwelling, actually. It would be easier, I wouldn't be here if it was going to be a dwelling. They would just build a dwelling, but this is literally just a garage, doesn't even have any storage in it.
Okay, great, that was my...
Okay, great. Anyone else, I mean, switching to comment on this? Seeing no further comments?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, both of you are...
Are we aye?
Yes, indeed, both of you.
Aye.
It's been so long.
I know, it's been, that's okay. It's unusual to have both of you at once. So, we're unanimous on that decision to close the public hearing, pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the special permit for the garage.
Okay, so we're here. Motion's made and seconded, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. I say unanimously, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Arrowhead Archaeology Corporation, 19 Arrowhead Drive. They already have employee housing, they'd like to increase the size of the public housing out in the Arrowhead Drive pit area and provide the extra parking. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Anybody in, anybody in the public have any comments? Nope. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Who seconded?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Gregory Wahlberg, Wahlbangs. We've already done the fish market, if you didn't want to stay.
Yeah, more comfortable staying. It's nice, you have hours.
Gregory Hughes, 6 Wahlbang Avenue. Leslie?
Well, actually, I wanted to bring up something else before we forget, maybe before the next public hearing, can we go back to that tertiary dwelling?
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yes, there is.
Just don't want to forget about that.
Would you want to do that right now?
Do you have that information now?
Yeah, we could do that quickly while Steve's...
That would be great.
Arthur, is that the only thing you're staying for, is that tertiary dwelling?
Yep.
We'll go back to it. Hang on, Steve.
So some of the lots in the subdivision did have limitations, but that one we've not.
Okay.
Okay.
And thanks to Argus for helping find that decision during the evening.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion on that one?
Motion to approve, second.
All right. Barry's made a motion to approve, Nat seconded. Any further discussion on that tertiary? 11 Pippin's Way. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, back on schedule. Hughes, 6 Wahlbang, representing the applicant is...
Stephen Cohen for the applicant.
Did you give us a revised site plan?
I did, I have some copies here, and I submitted through staff, and I'm happy to pass out a few.
Might as well do that.
I have it.
Sure, but I have more...
More paper.
Thanks.
Wow.
And then, just do here some photographs of the, from the lot to show you what the aftermitation's like in the area.
Steve?
So, do they have a problem with it now?
So, this is a, an application for a pool, and I think you're aware that the Morlins Management District requires an application, whereas normally a pool is by right or, or special permit. There was a letter from one of the abutters requesting that the pool be relocated, and the plan in front of you on the first page shows the original location, and the second page shows the relocation to try and accommodate that abutter. We moved about 37 feet to the east and another 10 feet inland in the lot. We've also eliminated an infinity pool feature, which allows us to shrink the, the infinity edge feature, which allows us to shrink the size of the pool by about five feet, and also eliminate some of the noise from, from pumps and waterfalling. The intent, the, as you can see from the photographs, the area itself is fairly open, but has a lot of pines and scrub oak and other natural vegetative buffers, and the intent would be to keep as much of that as possible and to replant as much of that as necessary to create not only privacy for the pool, but privacy, you know, to and from the pool. So that from the road, you would not really see it, that, and then also, also that the abutters would see it. In the same way, the abutters don't want to see the pool, the homeowner doesn't want people seeing him in the pool. The other thing I'd note is that although the Morlins Management District is a 10-acre zoning district, this neighborhood is a bunch of two-acre lots that were grandfathered under a zoning freeze, and that the lot, not directly behind this one, but one kitty corner with it, has a pool, and that pool was installed in 2008. I have the building permit for it, if you, if you want it. It's a little funny, because I don't see a, a special permit for that pool, and in 2008, it should have had one, but apparently that was missed, sort of regardless, it doesn't matter, but just that the idea that there's no pools in the area wouldn't apply here since there's one, you know, essentially next door, but, but behind.
This isn't part of the cluster, right? This is just outside the cluster?
It's just outside, yeah.
Yeah. And your, your neighbor is okay with where you've relocated it?
Well, is Rota still here? Yeah, Rota represents the neighbor, and I think that Rota suggested to me that they were, you know, happy with the accommodation, and that asked me to represent to the record that the applicant intends to heavily screen with natural vegetation. You know, we wouldn't do like a hedge or anything, we would be, you know, there's a selection of plants that the landscaper has suggested that would look appropriate for the area, that would provide the, the amount of density and, and screening, but not look, you know, formal.
Well, under the building code, you're required to fence it with four feet anyway.
Well, the screening, the, the four-foot fence would either be wire or wood, but the desirability here is to prevent visibility.
Okay.
And so, of course, the, the commission should feel it's necessary to have a condition for that, that, that's fine. What my client doesn't want to do is have a, like a hedge or something like, that surrounds the pool. We'd rather do the buffer around the lot, so that the, you know, we, we don't want to clearcut the lot and then have a little thing around the pool. We want the opposite, we want the clear, the yard inside and the screening around the edge.
Anybody have any questions up here?
Yeah.
Carl?
Mr. Cohen, is there an address, have you addressed the concerns of a neighbor regarding drainage and, and that sort? Did you read that letter?
I, I did, I don't know that, I mean, this lot itself already is sloping, I'm not sure that the pool really does anything, you know, for that issue.
It's hard scaping, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, the, the lot itself is already at an angle, so whatever water is coming in that spot is going, that, going, I mean, you could see from the topography there.
Okay.
You know, certainly, we could take that into account, but I'm not sure that there's an impact at that, at that volume.
And it's mostly outside our jurisdiction, but you know, there's another civil way they can go if you displace water onto their property, which is outside our jurisdiction.
Yeah, I, I think that the vegetative screening should effectuate soaking up a lot of that.
Okay. Any more questions from anybody? Any comments from the public? Rota?
For the record, Rota Wyman, I represent Myra and Charles Rubel, they are the director abutters at 8 Wahlbang, and I've been working with Paul Santos and Stephen on this, and we're satisfied with the movement of the pool, approximately the 30 feet. The one thing that we do want to reiterate is the screening, and we'd like the, this relief to be conditioned on the heavy screening. We talked about a mix of high and low plantings, including cedars and higher trees as well. So if we could just get that included in the decision, we appreciate what they've done and approve the new location. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment in the public?
So, I'm happy to take that condition, and it, I had asked the landscaper for a plan, but his wife had a baby today, so he prioritized that. But what, if the, if the board is amenable, we would take it as a condition with a, with an actual landscaping plan to be approved through staff.
That's not how it works. It's heavy evergreen, year-round vegetative screening.
Yeah.
Evergreen.
Yeah, that's an acceptable condition.
Planted and maintained.
Yeah, I think we'd want to do a mix of natural and evergreen, but, but I get the point.
But you get the point.
Yeah.
Natural goes away in the winter, and the evergreen does not.
Right.
And if you have a wire fence, it's got to be in an evergreen planting.
Yeah. What's there now is a mix of scrub oak and pine and viburnum, and it's pretty heavy, and I think recreating that would allow for a dense, non-seethrough vegetation.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none? Leslie?
Madam Chairman, just to clarify, are we talking about landscaping from the red bubble area?
Around the pool.
Or all the way around the pool?
Around the pool. To hide the pool.
Well, I...
He just said he wanted to do the perimeter of the property.
You're going to be required by the HDC to hide the pool.
Yeah, so the HDC has approved this already. The area in red was the area that we showed, that is, for the abutter that, that set the notice, and where it's thinner now, the area that's not bubbled is where it's really thick already. So that's the area where we said we would fill in more, but we're happy to do sort of filling around the perimeter.
Okay. Anything else?
You were going to pro offer a plan anyways, right?
Yes.
That you're going to work with, so I think that resolves things right there.
Yeah, I, I mean, what we don't want to do is like rip out what's there to, you know, plant new pine trees or whatever.
But you also don't want a freestanding wire fence.
That's what...
Yeah, I, I think we'll, we'll come in through staff with a plan for approval.
Okay. Any other comments? Someone want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Sub move.
David seconded, Catherine. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on, that was just one.
Motion to approve.
With that condition?
Yes, indeed.
Okay, is there, Nat seconded?
Yes.
I'm going to, um, in a magazine, I'll rattle these off, but we do have some sort of standard conditions that we use in the MMD relative to construction dates.
Dates and...
Because of birds and...
Birds and moths and everything else, owls. Yeah.
So you'll work the staff on that.
Yeah. So that's part of your motion, Barry?
Yes, it is.
The usual MMD?
Yep.
And that was your second, Nat?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. And you need to take this one.
Okay.
Jeez, I don't know, they're all coming up tonight.
It's like one, three, three or four months, and they're all on tonight.
I fell into this one by accident. Joe?
Just give him a second. Hold on. Hi. Joe's abutment. Go ahead if you want. Yep. So, this is an addition for the abutment's mother. He would like to bring her home. So it's a handicap bathroom, bedroom, and then up to the top right would be a shared bathroom for the two bedrooms, and then there is a, one other bump out to the left going to the east, that would be for a new kitchen that would be handicap accessible. Right now, it's very tight. And then the back is just a shed that we'd like to turn into, I could be unable to lay to date, so while we're here.
Thank you. Board members, any questions that you have at this point? I trust you've read the staff report, as well, so your staff is recommending this would stay open until we clear past, yeah. So, any questions?
Nope.
I'm going to turn to Leslie, let's see if the same thing from the staff perspective.
No, so the only thing that I would just clarify with the board is that, you know, the additions, anywhere where the over 10% is applied, has to be under 1690 or single story.
Right now, we're at 149 on all additions.
And we'll draft a decision, so we'll be ready to go at first meeting following the vote. So if the article's not approved at the meeting, you won't be able to move forward, but if it is, then both public hearing, if you're required to approve it, you can...
Yep. Good enough. So, board members, if no other question, public hearing is open at this point. Does anyone have any questions? Nope? All right, so, someone make it...
I'm moving to close the public hearing.
Well, actually, I probably should leave everything open.
Leave it open?
Leave it all open for now, because if you want to do a continuous, that way everything's in fair play at that moment. So, board members, do you, I mean, unless you really do want to close the public hearing...
No, so we got to, so we have to continue this to April 9?
That would be the recommendation at this point.
That's half the time here.
That would be the recommendation.
All right, so I'll make that motion then.
And do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion's made and seconded for discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Very good.
Mr. Chairman, just one question.
Yeah.
There seemed to be some confusion about the applicant's name.
Robert.
Application on Richard.
I know.
So we felt maybe it's a cousin, brother.
No. It's just a typo.
So we can clean that up. Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, which I think is the one most people are here for, is this last one. Topland Properties Modification, 6 Cannaberry Lane.
Yes, Sarah Altra for the applicant Blue Flag Developments. The owner of the property-
Sarah, move that up, because I can't hear you either. There you go.
The owner of the property is our two, actually, two LLCs, Remar 1 and Remar 2. My client has the remaining lots in this subdivision, which has been out there since 1973 under agreement. There are 36 lots. We spoke with the zoning enforcement officer, Marcus Silverstein, about our idea of having a lot with some subdivision amenities on it. And asked him what the appropriate way to go would be. And he got back to me and said a modification of the subdivision. So that is why we're here. It's not a special permit, it's a modification of the original subdivision approval. The proposal, and I'll tell you, I'm going to ask you to continue this at the end of the discussion, because we're, we'd like to try to work with some neighbors to find a better lot or a more acceptable lot. I can tell you why the lot we selected was chosen, which is Lot 6. It's the first lot that we have under agreement as you come down Cannaberry on the left-hand side.
Do we have the little red pointer thing, Catherine? Want to give it to Sarah?
I mean, I don't really-
You can touch it.
I can touch it. That's the one where you've got it proposed for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we currently have it proposed for that lot. Now, the thinking in putting it there is that directly across this, across Low Beach Road from this subdivision, there's a four-foot walking path that the subdivision lots, Lots 5 through the end, not the first four, but Lots 5 on, have a right to walk down a four-foot wide strip to the beach. And, you know, this is intended to be a very simple and low-key proposal. The idea was to build, you know, like a sort of a field house where you could, people who lived in the subdivision, who bought from my client, bought one of these 36 lots, could store, you know, beach umbrellas, beach chairs, towels. There might be some like gym equipment, like the casino currently has gym equipment where people can go and work out. So not every single person in Sconsett has to have a fully equipped gym in their house. Maybe a pool. That's not a definite, because the lots are big and every lot is entitled to have a pool. But there's an idea that perhaps if there was a community pool, that would cut down on the number of pools in the subdivision. The subdivision is currently restricted to one dwelling per lot. And, I mean, that's really it. It would be limited to the owners of the 36 lots, would not be open to the public, would not, it's not proposed to be a club where other people from outside of the subdivision could come in and belong. It's strictly for the 36 lots that my client owns. If you thought we should, we'd be willing to keep that open for other people within this Topland subdivision, I think a total of 57 lots. But our proposal at the moment is for the 36 lots that we will control.
Okay. Do you want to explain why it's not a commercial pool under the zoning bylaw?
Oh, sure. Well-
A lot of the comments are going to come up-
Okay.
That it's a commercial enterprise. And you might as well just head, just talk about it right now.
Okay. Well, it's not, it's not commercial, first of all, because it's not being operated as a business. It's an amenity, it's an pertinent amenity in the subdivision, so it's a pertinent to the residential uses. It also is not going to meet the definition, if we have a swimming pool at all, which, by the way, is not 100% guaranteed. The further back we go in the subdivision, the more likely it is that we'll have a pool. But the primary focus is to keep stuff in so that people can pick it up and walk down to the beach and not have to, not have to drive, quite honestly. We're trying to make it so that people walk and just walk down to the beach, take their towel, their blanket and their umbrella from this structure, walk down and enjoy a day at the beach. So a commercial swimming pool, a structure designed to be used for recreational purposes either above or below grade, containing water more than 24 inches in depth and exceeding 150 square feet of water surface area or exceeding 1,000 gallons. Swimming pool may be a primary use or accessory use to a club, recreational facility, transient residential facility, yacht, sailing, club or other commercial uses defined in 139-7A. As opposed to a residential swimming pool, which has the exact same definition, a structure designed to be used for recreational purposes either above or below grade, containing water more than 24 inches in depth and exceeding 150 square feet of water surface area or exceeding 1,000 gallons. Same exceptions. The swimming pool must be located on the same or contiguous lot as a residential dwelling or constructed for the benefit of a group of residences, such as a multifamily development, subdivision or in conjunction with a neighborhood association. So this is, in fact, a residential pool being built or constructed for the benefit of a group of residences in a subdivision and in connection with a neighborhood association. We're going to form a neighborhood association for the 36 lots.
To give it some context, it's like Nash Aquit and Noshop.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. This is very much the same as what Nash Aquit and Noshop have.
Yep.
Okay. Do the board members have any comments, or would you like to hear from the public? There's quite a few here.
Love to hear from the public.
Is that okay with everybody? We're going to open the public hearing. And I'm going to go to Rhoda first, Ron, and then I know there's a bunch of other neighbors here. So this is going to get continued to the next month. Everybody who's here gets to have their say now on the record, so we have it. In case you have something better to do than be here on April 9.
For the record, Rhoda Weinman, I represent Georgia and Richard Graismann, who are here this evening and will also want to speak.
Address?
Start.
Address?
They were butters.
Yeah, but what address?
39-
39-
Low Beach Road.
Low Beach, okay.
I also represent Jeff and Valerie Paley, and they own 37 Low Beach Road. They are two of the three director butters to this property at 6 Cannaberry. And the Paleys are not here because they're out of the country. If they were in the country, they would be here. As I'm certain the board realizes, based on eight-
If you pass this one, we can just show with our pointer where-
Yeah, where's the little red thing? You must just leave it right over there.
Cover your eyes, Karen.
Aren't they right there?
No. No, they're on Low Beach Road.
Go this way, that's what I'm saying. They're up there. They're those two. Aren't they those two right there?
No.
This is, six is right.
Six is right here.
Six is right here.
Yeah.
So they're in here.
Well.
It's okay.
You guys know where they live?
Yes. Six is here, right?
Where are they at?
She's right there. Yeah.
Up to the right, right there. Those guys.
No, two and three, I think.
You see that one right there? All right, come on up.
May I?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
Go ahead.
Just press the button. Just a little button.
Our property is here.
Yep. That's what I thought. They're up on-
Two and three.
Yeah, up on Low Beach side.
39, 37.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
As the board realizes, I'm sure based on eight letters that have been submitted in opposition to this application, the neighbors are extremely concerned about what the proposed commercial activity is going to do to their quiet residential neighborhood and the peaceful enjoyment that they have previously enjoyed all the years that they've been living there and placed a great deal of importance on. As I mentioned, my clients and one other family are the closest director butters to this, and they feel very strongly that they should not be subjected to this. They purchased their properties because of the tranquility of the neighborhood and this drastic proposed change in the neighborhood should not be forced upon them. Since this property has not been sold yet, this proposal is in front of you to essentially assist the developer in the potential sale of his vacant lots that he's about to purchase. The role of the board is not to help a developer sell lots. The role of the board, at least, should be to consider what this is going to do to the abutters and to the concern that the abutters have based on a neighborhood that they bought into, many of them several years ago, and they bought into it because it's a quiet residential neighborhood. And all of a sudden, right next, I mean, as close as you can put it, certainly my two clients and the third person as well who's here tonight, I mean, that's a direct, direct interference with their property and enjoyment of it. We would really request that the board deny this application. It's not appropriate for this neighborhood. It's certainly not something that anybody that bought into this ever thought would happen. And it's to help somebody that's going to develop this property sell it, and I think that's totally inappropriate. We do have a copy of an email in the file from the developer stating that he would be willing to change the location of the proposed facility to find one that fits the concerns of the current owners of the abutting properties. And that's an email that he sent to one of the individuals. And once again, we feel that it should be denied, but if this board feels that it's appropriate to approve this, which we hope you don't, we would ask that you approve it only on the lots that are right at the back. It's Lots 26, 27 and 28. That would be the only appropriate lots that we feel should be allowed to have this facility. But again, we strongly believe that this is not in the best interest of this neighborhood, and we would ask you to please deny it.
Does it matter, Rhoda, if it's just a clubhouse for storage of beach chairs and stuff versus a pool? Is it the pool is the biggest objection?
I think any commercial entity in the subdivision is objectionable, but I think, and I'll let you hear from the others here, but I think that if it's just a building to store things, it would probably be less disruptive than a pool. But they still don't want it in the location that's proposed.
I understand it is not commercial. Noshops is not commercial, Nash Aquit is not commercial. We can't consider it commercial. We can't consider the impact.
I understand, and that's what we're trying to-
But not based on commercial.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
But the impact is going to be huge to these people. And certainly where it's located now has to, has to be denied. But we'd ask you to deny the whole thing.
Okay. All right, come on up. Please state your name and your address.
Erica Drayzen. We're at 41 Low Beach Road, and we just-
Hold on, I want to make sure that Catherine gets them all. Hold on. Hold on. I want to make sure Catherine gets them all correctly. Can you spell your last name?
D-R-A-Z-E-N. Erica is E-R-I-C-A, and Jeffrey, J-E-F-F-R-E-Y.
And how do you spell your last name again?
D-R-A-Z-E-N.
And you're at 41 Low Beach?
Well, a month ago, we brought four in the subdivision, 4 Cannaberry Lane, to build our retirement home. So we were not listed as an abutter because it was, the transaction took place one month ago.
You weren't in the list, yeah.
Yeah, so we weren't on the list, but we were at, an abutter at 41 Low Beach Road, so we did get the notification. And obviously, we are the direct abutter, because we are, plan to build our house at 4 Low Beach Road. 4 Cannaberry Lane, sorry. And so if this goes through, we've just lost a whole bunch of value to our lovely little lot there.
Is this you right there?
We're at 41. Now move your pointer up.
You said Lot 4, that looks like a 4, that's why.
That's what I'm asking, is that Lot 4?
That's 41 Low Beach Road.
The numbering's confusing. 41 Low Beach Road is the lot at the corner of Silver Street and Low Beach Road.
Right, that's that one. That's where you are right now.
And we bought the one right next to it.
Right here?
No.
Right here.
That one there. And the one they proposed to build the facility on is that one there.
Six, okay. So you bought, you bought 5 Cannaberry?
No, you bought Lot Number 5, which is-
Yeah.
4 Cannaberry Lane.
4, but it's Lot 5. Because we don't have the addresses, we just have the lot numbers.
Five on the- Yeah, it's 4 Cannaberry Lane, Lot 5 on your plan.
Okay.
So needless to say, we were pretty disappointed when we saw this proposal come, came in, because this is not what we bought into originally, nor what we bought into a month ago. And as I read the, your rules, it says that you can't alter the subdivision plan, which was for a residential home there, we thought, without the permission of the current owners. And there are lots of them. I mean, we're not the only ones. We would obviously be most directly affected. I also find the idea that people are going to walk the half a mile down there to pick up a beach chair, to walk in front of our house. By the way, the access to the beach is not at the end of Cannaberry Lane, it's the end of Silver Street. And it's a long schlep from there to the beach. So it's a half a mile of beach on the way down. So I just, I don't believe that it's going to be used for that. I don't believe people are going to walk the half mile. I think we're going to be full of cars, and they're going to park all over the place, and it's going to be noisy, and it just, it just makes me sick to think that we've made this huge investment to try and build a retirement, full-time retirement home here, and it's pretty much lost.
Now, does it matter to you if it was a pool or no pool or just a building?
Well, I think a pool is obviously more noisy. But storage facility implies that people are going to drive there and pick up their stuff, so it's just, it's not going to be, it's going to be a nuisance no matter what. And I'm not sure what, we wouldn't have any control over what happens once it's built. So it just, it, we object to the idea, but the idea that they're putting it next to a, someone else's lot rather than the middle of their lots, which would make it more walkable and which would affect the value of their abutting lots rather than existing abutting lots seems just unfair.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's John Gallagher, and I live at 13 Cannaberry Lane. I've owned the house there since 1997.
What lot?
Well, you can't see it on this, you could go to another page.
It's right here?
No.
Isn't it?
No, you've got to go to another page.
Go to the big, the big map with all the lots on it. There you go.
So, right there, that's good. So I'm, I guess I'm 47.
Right here?
That's me.
Okay.
So-
So it's Lot 47.
These lots, by the way, they look like there's a lot of lots, but it's not, it's, they're big lots, lots, but there's not a lot of land along the street. So it looks like if they moved the pool, or this whole proposition up to Lot Number
Wester would have been in the back.
14, or 13, or 12 for that matter, that's not going to be good for me. And I'm, but I'm here for a lot of people. I've got something like 12 proxies that are against this, so.
Can you, when you're, before you leave, can you give those to Catherine?
I will.
Thanks.
So I want to echo what Rhoda said. I feel the same. My wife feels the same way. I feel the same way as the Draysons did. I mean, I bought this 21 years ago, and I plan on living here. And why we bought it is for the tranquility of what Sconsett provides. And I think, and I don't want to sound like a snob, but Noshop and Nash Aquit isn't Sconsett. And I don't think that having a community pool, which is what they, they're asking for a pool, and the storage facility, I agree with that whole argument. People aren't going to pick up their chairs and walk to the beach. I go out there with my dogs, it's a schlep out there, is the way you put it, and it is. I just think that it's going to provide, and I don't think that the builder needs to do this to attract people to buy these lots. There's 15 of us already. They just bought a lot. My understanding was that the people that own this presently, the Graham's, hadn't want to, they didn't want to sell lots. So I don't know, you all have got to figure out about the 31 or 36 lots and how they come online and the surge issues and all that, but I'm concerned about noise, traffic. Somebody suggested that this might be used as a sales building to sell the lots. I don't know if that's true or not. But I know that one of the people that I'm, I'm here representing, who lives at the end, Tony Vale, he's not going to want to have the pool up in his neighborhood either. So everybody here, nobody wants it. And the only people that I don't have are the people that I didn't know where they were. But I don't think this is a very popular thing. There was no notice, nobody approached me or my wife, or for that matter, except for you all, oh no, you didn't, you weren't approached. So it seems like it was buried in the paper last week or two weeks ago, and, you know, and I'm going to miss the 820 boat, and I'm going to be here for the next three days. And I'm happy to fight this, because this is my, this is my house. I mean, I put, and money's not a thing, but you know, this is where we, I feel like somebody's just kind of coming into our neighborhood and creating their own little thing, and hello, it's not fair. So I'm off, I get off trap, so noise, traffic, tranquility. And there was no, again, there was no notice. I mean, I have rules and regulations governing this- I, I mean, I have rules and regulations governing the subdivision of lands, section 2.06I, that mandates that, you know, we should, I don't know if this is accurate anymore, my wife came up with it, but, that, you know, lots within a subdivision that they have to be, consent has got to be requested. Nobody's approached us. Now, that could be, I can't rely on her, her due diligence here, but, uh, I just think that it's out of character with what we all want, what we all bought into, and, um, we don't know the people that are, that are doing this, and it just seems like, I feel personally violated, and, uh, I'm expressing myself. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Just to make sure Catherine gets those.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Come on down, George.
So, these are the people that moved close by, a hawk circle.
That's right, she has them. Could you get, Georgia's going to talk next? All right, Catherine.
I'm Georgia Raisman. I live at 39 Low Beach Road, which is lot three. Um, and it's my husband, Richard. So we're on the corner of Canterbury and Low Beach Road. We're directly, the back of our lot is directly across from where this proposed building would be built with its pool, and as mentioned to us, a spa and a fieldhouse. Now, I understand that it's not commercial in a technical sense, but in our sense, it's commercial, in the sense that there will be a lot more activities, whether that's swimming, kids, parking, food, a snack bar, parties, maybe weddings. Um, and parking for, there are 57 lots in this subdivision, there are 36 proposed to be owned by this developer. That's a lot of parking, even if it's nothing more than a building that supplies, um, lockers for people to go to the beach, it's still a lot of parking that people have to put their cars in when they pick up their beach, beach equipment. So, it's not, it's not minimizing it, but it really, it may not be commercial in the technical sense, but it's commercial in the sense of a lot of activity that doesn't normally happen in a residential area. Um, when we bought in 1995, you know, we looked at the lots, we know it's a subdivision, right? So you expect that there are going to be buildings put in, but what you expect is that there are going to be neighbors, that there are going to be houses, that there are going to be hedges, that it's going to be like Maury Lane. There are going to be kids, there are going to be hedges, there are going to be bicycles. You don't expect that there's going to be a fieldhouse, and a pool, and a spa, and a lot of parking. So, okay, times change, and, you know, we understand that a developer might want an amenity, wants to find new buyers, but the nature of this amenity is just very, very objectionable. It's just much more, much more, much more different than what anybody had reasonably expected when we bought in, and I think it's reasonable to expect even now, given the times do change. I mean, the spa, the pool, the fieldhouse, geez. I also think, and I, I brought, actually, I brought maps, because I also think this idea of people walking to the beach is ludicrous. In the 22 years that we have had this house, we have walked down that, that right-of-way once, and it's a miserable walk. Most of the way is covered with brambles, is covered with brush. I mean, it may be four feet, but the, the nature doesn't know that it's four feet, so most of it is overgrown. And then, then you get down to some heavy, heavy dune walking. So, people first would have to drive their cars to somewhere where they parked, and then pick up this gear, and then walk through all this brush, and then walk through heavy dunes. Now, who's going to do that? Especially when you can drive a few hundred feet down to the low beach where there's parking, and then you just walk a couple of, you know, a couple hundred feet through the dunes, and you, and low beach is not a heavily used beach, right? On 4th of July, you look in each direction, and maybe you see six people. So it's not like you're going to give up this, this walk in order to go to a heavily, heavily used beach. So, okay, so we request that this thing be denied in its entirety. We think it's really out of character with the neighborhood, it's not quiet, it's not going to allow us the quiet enjoyment that most of us and our neighbors have expected. But we know that it's not, you know, it's rare for the planning board to say to a developer, you can't do this at all. So, you know, we hate the fact that it's rare, but it is rare. So I guess our thought is, if you really have to do it, you really ought to ask this developer to put this lot, this, this building, whatever he wants to build, someplace other, someplace where the people who are going to be impacted are people who are buying from him. You know, people who know what they're getting into, right? I mean, if they're going to buy a lot that's next to a building that's got parking, and pools, and all this noise, they should know what they're getting into. What, it's, I think it's outrageous for somebody to come along and say, we're going to put all this stuff where you guys already live, where we've got 37 empty lots, but we're going to put it right down where you guys are. I mean, how does that, how does that happen? How is that reasonable? So I thought, I thought it just should be allowed at the farthest place away from where there are any abutters, at the, at the very least, that's the only place it ought to be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I heard the attorney for the applicant speak on that this is-
Identify yourself with the tape.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Richard Raisman, R-A-Y-S-M-A-N, I'm Georgia's husband. Uh, I heard the attorney for the abutter speak that this is not commercial. I don't know how you call a fieldhouse, a spa, an exercise room, and a swimming pool not commercial, punked right in the middle of a quiet residential area. It's going to be commercial. People are going to rent it, like they rent the casino, they're going to rent it for parties. Uh, the parking, I don't, you know, there are 57 u, uh, units there, uh, somebody rents it for parking, and they're going to be parking up and down Canterbury, there's going to be parking up and down Low Beach Road. Uh, it's, it's going to be ultra-busy in a, what should be a quiet residential area. And, uh, we ask that you deny this request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ron.
I'm Ron Bailey. I represent the people at England Property, the Graham's. We did sell Mr. Drayzen a lot next door to him. He already has two houses on his corner in the garage, which is fine. He's a great person. He didn't have the right to walk down the path to the beach, because one of the original lots got sold off on Low Beach Road. There was no easement. When the Graham's bought all the property, they owned the lots across the street, so they took four feet off, so they could create a real legal private path if people wanted to go to the beach. So the Mr. Drayzen I sold the property to here, that was his brother previously that got up and talked, uh, which was fine, that they got up and said, there's, you know what they think. Uh, I just wondered, across the street, which is number 39, that's the first lot going in Canterbury, if you want to put your screen up. Put it on the first lot on the right. Uh, the next one, that's right there. That fellow just put a pool in there. Did anyone object to him putting a swimming pool in? They just built it a year or so ago. That comes off of-
It's not, it's not them.
Oh, no, it's not them. I know it's not them, but I just wondered, were they upset that he put one in? I mean, anyone can put a pool in if they do the landscaping. The idea of this was going to be simply, it's not that all the people are going to drive there and park their cars. The only thing this was for, I had a beautiful place on Long Bokean between Sarasota and Annemarie Island. We had 36 units, a beautiful pool, and the pool was only for us. We never had more than 12 or 14 people there, as far as people coming to drive there and park there to go to the pool. It's ridiculous, but if they don't want a pool there, I'm sure they won't put one there. It's as simple as that, but I don't know if they objected when the man across the street, the first lot on the right, put a pool in just last year, and then the next neighbor, he's got a pool in too, I believe. There are a couple of pools already in there, so you can get your own private pool, and if they don't want a pool there, so be it, but nobody's going to drive a car there, nobody's going to rent it out for all the things what they just said. That was totally ridiculous. The idea of this pool was, so people could keep their beach chairs in, they could use the bathrooms before they left, when they got back off of the beach to shower off, pick their stuff up. There won't be any parking there whatsoever. No one parks there now anyway. They go to the beach, they walk from these lots to the beach. Or like they said, you can go down the road and drive right where the sewer treatment plant was and go to it. So, but if they don't want the pool there, we don't want to get anybody mad, so he probably won't put one in. Because if you do it, the people in the back won't want it either. But believe me, I'm telling you, if, only if I'm experienced, of owning this property that I did, on Long Bokean, which is the finest there is, that a community pool works great, because you can control it. No kids, unless they're 12 or older, got to go to their parents', the whole thing, it works out beautiful. And that's what they have in today's day and age, which is modern in perfetto. I have pictures of it, if they want to see what it looks like down there, uh, the finest place. I, where I live, I live in a neighborhood too, and if Mr. Gallagher would want to buy a lot next door, we offered it to him, but he didn't want it. We offered it to Mr. Vale in the back, we offered him one too, but they don't want to buy it. So, you know, they're nice people, and I've got nothing against them, but if they don't want it, just say so, and that's that.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, okay.
Uh, just, uh, Nash Aquus, it has one, much higher density, Noshop, much higher density, there's 200 lots in Noshop. Um, basically, we have one off of Fairgrounds Road. Um, we have one off of Bartlett that has a, a community pool, it's a little bit more rural. Hawthorne Park has a community pool. Um, it's not unusual for large subdivisions here to have that amenity. Generally speaking, it's not next to the houses, except for in Noshop, because it's so tight. Um, we have somebody over here who used to run a pool at, um, Nash Aquus. So it's not an unheard of amenity being asked for. We are considering your particular subdivision as a unique subdivision, and not in Sconset, let's face it. Totally different ballpark out there. Um, so I think one of the ideas that you suggested is that he puts this pool, whatever it is, back in the middle of the lots that he has bought, as opposed to up where all of you guys already bought. I assume most of the 36 lots are towards the back?
The 36 lots are spread out, but they're mainly-
On the south side.
Canterbury Lane, mid, but there's also some circles that go off.
Yeah.
This, this is Erica Drayzen again. I, I just, I just want to say that I think there's a big difference between putting in a subdivision that has a pool and a fieldhouse in it before you sell the lots.
This is a change to a plan that was approved 30 years ago.
We bought our lot, uh, 41 Low Beach Road, we were the second lot to be sold in that subdivision. So we're one, we are the oldest owners, the longest time owners, but maybe the oldest too, um, of a lot in this subdivision. So this is really a change in what the expectation was when we bought it, and I think that's totally different than buying into Noshop, knowing that there was a pool. You could decide if you're going to buy the lot next door. You know, we have no choice now, um, about what goes in next door to us, um, and it just, I just think it's, that's a very different situation.
Thank you.
Just to echo that, I think there is a difference between a community pool and a private residential pool. I think part of the concern of, of the people that I've talked to is, this is just not going to be a pool and a cabana and a spa. I mean, it's going to require people. People are going to have to manage this, so I don't know where they're going to park, I don't know who's going to pay for them. They're, I'm part of this subdivision right now, right?
Yeah.
All right, stop, stop.
Through the chair.
There is a homeowners association out there.
Yes. So it seems to me that we're almost dividing, I'm sorry?
There, you've got a homeowners association amongst yourselves?
No, we don't.
We're no formal one, but you have a group.
No, we don't.
Okay.
But it's one subdivision, which is now-
You shouldn't have a homeowners association, just saying. Go ahead.
Uh, so there's, there's, it seems like this divi, subdivision is being divided now by this new purchaser. And again, I, I kind of, I, I, my, my thoughts and feelings are, I've been here for 21 years, and I'm not the first one in. I was, you know, but we all, this is a kind of a shocker, and I, I question really whether the developer needs it in the first place. I don't think people come to Sconset, you know, for community pools. I think they've got the beach there, they've got everything there. I don't think that's necessary, frankly.
Okay, that's good.
So.
All right, Ron, stop for a second. Sarah?
I just wanted to go through where the lots are, and where, um, I think we might propose to move this, just so you, you have a sense for the next, um, meeting, because we are going to have to re-notice, because we were just noticed for, um, lot six. I also, you know, I understand it's a bit of a shock, the subdivision has sat out there unbuilt for such a long time, people have gotten used to the fact that it wasn't built, and all of a sudden, there are going to be 35 or 36, this would take the place of a home, um, 35 or 36 homes. It's going to be, I think, a major change for that neighborhood, and I, I don't think there's any, um, dispute about that. And it was envisioned, I think, at the time that the subdivision was done, there was a big to-do about it. I remember, um, people lying down in front of the bulldozers when they tried to do the secondary access out to the milestone road, so this subdivision has a long, a long history. So the lots that would be controlled by this particular developer on this side of the road, and the reason that we're on this side of the road is that this is all Coast Guard property over here, so we're not up against any residential, um, neighbors. Over here, we, we would be up against these neighbors, there are people who live over here, so we're trying to stay on the west side, I guess you'd call it, or maybe that's-
South side.
South side? Yeah, I guess that's right, the south side of Canterbury Lane. So, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
Go to the next map, Catherine, the big map.
Yeah. We don't really need to get all the way over there.
All the way down.
Because then, then there's a big gap, so go back to the other.
So this is 11 right there.
Yeah, 11, then 12.
Keep going.
Yep. But then there's a big gap.
No, 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 no.
No, they're houses.
Stay down there.
Yeah, a gap in lots that aren't controlled by us.
Okay.
So go back, go back down to that first map.
Catherine.
This one?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's every lot from here to here, and on the other side of the street, it's this lot and these, right here.
Okay. Well, that's like 10, where the other is 20.
So, those are up in the back. So our idea, because we can, would control all of these lots, would be to put it like somewhere here, like nine, as opposed to six, maybe eight or nine in here. That way, everyone across the street is involved, the people on both sides are involved. These lots are, um, 100 feet wide, so we'd be, let's say if we were on nine, we'd be at least 200 feet away from this lot here. We'd be more than 200 feet away from our nearest owner over here, and we have all of these lots that are part of the subdivision. So that's, I think that's the idea. Um, I also want to clarify, um, spa, because I think that is confusing for people.
That was your word.
I understand that, and that's why I want to clarify it. Thank you very much. Um, is, like a hot tub? It's part of the pool, it would be part of the pool. We're not talking about massages and nail salons and that sort of thing. We're literally talking about a hot tub, but people don't use the word hot tub anymore for reasons that I think don't bear going into. So, and most recently, the last, um, spa that I saw was actually part of a pool, so you actually couldn't even tell where the so-called spa ended and the pool started. They're all quite beautiful and fancy now, but we may not even have a pool, quite honestly, because our focus really is on the beach, and we're not trying to bring, you know, it's not going to bring traffic from anywhere else, it's not going to bring cars from anywhere else. Honestly, the idea is that people would ride their bikes down, or walk down, grab their stuff, and head out to the beach. Or go in and, you know, do their hour workout, take a shower and head home, or head to wherever they're going. I didn't know if the board had any other questions.
Uh, Sarah, just have a question. Have any of the, uh, abutters been offered inclusion into the pool here, or is it really being separated, whether they're doing a lot?
No, we'd be, we, you know, I've said if we are going to be offering that, if people are interested in the-
Not that they want it, but if they were at least offered and included in the conversation-
People in the subdivision. You know, the other thing I want to point out is that a residential facility, which a residential facility, which is not, I mean, a recreational facility, which is not what we're proposing, but could be proposed here, is a special permit in every zone. So, we could have just come in and proposed a recreational facility that was open to the public, God forbid. That isn't what we're doing. But I think it's a little, I think people need to be aware of this, of what the zoning actually allows, because to say that, you know, you've bought in and you've lived down there forever and never dreamed that this could happen, well, it's right in the bylaw that something like a recreational facility could be done there. It's not what we're proposing. We want to just do a simple thing of amenities for a homeowners association. Currently, there is no homeowners association for this Topland Property subdivision, because it was done prior to the board getting smart and requiring those. So, there is nothing in place for when the roads start to fall apart in the, in this subdivision. So, it will be, I think, a good thing for the neighbors if these 36 lots are part of a homeowners association, because you'll at least know that those 36 people will be stuck with your road maintenance when the, when the paving starts to go and the things start to fall apart. So, we are going to put together, you know, a traditional sort of homeowners association with dues and maintenance, and that is what we'll pay for the upkeep, not only of the facility that we're proposing, but also for at least the share of those 36 lots and the upkeep and maintenance ongoing of the drainage and sanitary sewer down there, which, by the way, will be a good thing for the sewer, because currently, the sewer's not optimally functioning, because there are so few houses in the back, it's not flowing through the way it will when all the houses are occupied. So, that's been recently kind of snaked and camered and checked out, and I think it will be actually a benefit to the neighborhood once that starts working properly.
Okay. Mr. Gallagher?
This is a private road. Are you aware of that, ma'am?
Absolutely.
It's a private road. So, we pay for all the, I think, fraud members doing that. I would just like to show you where the people live, because I think that's important. Because when you, when you go north of whichever direction we're going in...
West.
West.
Here's the map if you want all the houses to them there. Might help them.
Kathy, the next map.
And it's the second button.
Okay, so, all right. So, stuff right there. So, one of the guys, one of the people that rode, I think, lives right there. Is that right, Ron?
Yep. Here's a map that shows where every house is in the subdivision.
Okay, well...
They own all the lots except the two that I put "sold" on.
I can't see.
All the lots in the red background, except the two that say "sold."
So, most of the houses are right in the middle around Packet Drive?
Yeah.
Because I remember approving some of those.
And if you go, can you go up a little bit? Reaper, is it called?
Reaper.
Either way, yeah, Reaper Circle.
Reaper Circle, there are a couple up there.
One there, and then on the Canterbury Lane side, right across from Packet, there are people there.
Right.
And then, there's people that live here, rent our property, the Chissons, that wanted me to express their concern. The Zimmerman's live over here, and the Kennedys live over there. And they also, they just don't like the concept of this community recreational area.
And, Sheriff, I have a, I have a map that I'm going to share with you that has, for the file, all the lots that we'd be, all 36 lots. Remar 1 is shown in yellow, and Remar 2 is shown in pink.
Just take a look at that one, Sarah. That shows every lot there is, that they own, that you're buying.
Yeah, that's a much better map.
Yeah.
What'd you say? Oh, yeah. Yeah, Packet Drive, and that part of Canterbury is where most of the houses are. And then, there's one in the back where Vale is.
What I don't understand is why they won't consider what they've heard tonight, and why are they still looking at a lot somewhere in the middle, and why aren't they looking at the back where it won't impact all of these people that you've heard tonight?
Well, I think that's what they're, they need to discuss that, which is why it's going over to April, to see if they can find a much more suitable lot, if there is one.
Well, I think that what my clients are certainly looking for, and I think what you've heard from others tonight, we want to move to the back, where people aren't going to be impacted like this. There's going to be a real issue with traffic. There's going to be an issue, you know, no matter what anybody says about traffic, it's going to be a problem. And if there is a pool, it's going to create noise, it's going to create a lot of people. And it's not fair to, you know, to plop this right in the middle where people are going to be impacted like this. That just isn't fair, and it doesn't make sense. So, you know, what we suggested of the three back lots, where no one would be impacted, and I don't understand why that's not being considered.
Well, I think the reason, looking at that map that just went down the table, is that if it's down on those lower lots, on the south side of Canterbury, it's against the Navy Base, who cares? But it's in between all, a majority of their own lots and way away from Packet. George, come up and take a look at this map that we have right here. Pass that around up there.
Which one was it?
Linda, if you look way at the back, lots 26, 7, and 8...
Oh, they're, yeah.
They're also...
They're against a town property, so...
They're, they're up against the water company or the water property down at the end, and nobody's near that. I think it's disingenuous to focus on the parts that are down near Canterbury where the rest of us live, when 26 and 7 are available.
One other thing you might want to consider is if it's all the way at the back, whatever traffic's coming out of those 57 lots that are going to this pool, they're going to be driving past every one of you. If it's down towards the front, where all of you are way away from Packet Drive, where all of you are right sort of in that middle area. If it's down much farther and backed up to the Navy Base, they're running down the whole length of Canterbury to get to this pool. They're nowhere near you, and they're not going by your house every five minutes. They're in the area that's way away from you as far away as I can get it, if that's what's going to happen. I don't know if there's enough support here for a pool right now, frankly.
I didn't want to interrupt.
Barry, do you want to go?
Yeah, I mean, but...
It would help if this was all on one map, let me tell you.
I mean, I'd like to know if there's anyone else in the public who hasn't spoken yet, because the same people are kind of getting up multiple times here. The applicant quite clearly has said they're not, this is next month, not this, not tonight.
Correct.
And I think there's an opportunity for, I don't know if you've all met and talked, but if you haven't...
I spoke with Ms. Wyman, and, you know, she says they don't want it. She said what she said tonight.
Right, okay.
They don't want it at all, and if they do want it, they want it on those back three lots.
Okay.
And we don't want to put it on the back three lots. We're willing to compromise and move it back amongst our lots.
Yep.
But we don't want to go all the way to the back, because it defeats the purpose of being close to the beach.
I understand.
So, I'm not sure that there's a purpose in meeting. I, I met with, I think, when I, we spoke earlier today, Ms. Wyman told me that there was no willingness on the part of her clients to talk anymore. So, I, that is what you said to me today, Ron, I'm sorry.
All right, but again, I'm a firm believer that there's always an opportunity.
Right.
And to make that available is a good thing. And if no means no, still, you as the applicant, I think, have a right to at least, to say, okay. And we certainly have extended things out.
Right.
For at least one meeting to allow...
Right, and we have to renotice. If I, no matter where I'm going, I'm not staying, I know I'm not staying on Lot 6.
Right.
So, wherever I'm going, I've got to renotice.
Right.
And whether I renotice for every single, all 36 lots, which is going to be kind of logistically difficult, but I, I could do it. Or whether I renotice for a variety of lots, I don't know. I've got to figure out the notice part, but I will definitely renotice. I will definitely be back in April.
Okay.
It may or may not be with a pool. Really, I just wanted to get a sense from the board if they thought this was even something that was, was feasible with or without the pool.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay.
This is weird.
What?
I just had something there.
Carl?
Sorry.
Somebody, anybody.
Somebody different.
This is Jeff Dreason again from 41 Low Beach, and...
Can, can you...
Hold on one second. No, no point. Wait, he's talking right now. The board is, the board member is asking a question right now.
That's all.
Go ahead, Carl.
Thank you.
I have listened very carefully to this debate and these comments tonight, and they're duly noted. That being said, I would say the word compromise here would be good. If you put this facility, whatever it ends up being, and it's not in stone yet, if you put it up in the middle between their lots, I think that would be worth looking into. That's my feeling about it tonight. I'm willing to listen to more testimony in April, however this goes. But this is serious. This is a neighborhood. This is people who do want to build their retirement homes and who want a peace and quiet of their neighborhood. I respect that. I respect the people who have commented here tonight, and I have looked you in the eye while you're talking. However, we as a board, you know, the applicant's attorney has referenced the bylaw and the zoning, and this is serious. I mean, the zoning is serious stuff. And, you know, I'm just saying, it's, it's, the word compromise really needs to be remembered here during this debate. Thank you.
Right.
Leslie, you need to keep that map.
Yeah, distribution.
Yeah. That's not going anywhere.
We could give you more of those maps if you want.
Yeah, we need a whole bunch more of those.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me just make a general comment.
Yeah, quickly.
I just wanted to say, I, a little bit of experience managing community associations, and just along the lines of the compromise comment, but taking a little bit broader view longer term, is that I would suggest to all the parties involved to consider becoming involved in the homeowners association, because having a homeowners association interspersed within a community where you don't have members, at one point, you may feel whichever side of the table line, you have a leg up. But very quickly, that can be changed around, because some people have input into decisions and others don't. So, I would just suggest that it can be extremely divisive if you have a mix of homes that are and are not in the homeowners association, and it just might be something you want to consider as you're going forward as neighbors to what is change. This occurred, it's occurred in more than one subdivision in the community, but a historical reference would be the MB Farms Trust, which was a, is a subdivision off of Surfside Road. And then, the Nashquissette developer came in and developed Nashquissette, which is a completely different type of a subdivision, high-density rental community and geared towards that. But that's not the point. The point is, is that for many years, and probably for many more years, and I'm not talking about five or 10, I'm talking about for 30 or 50, it's been almost 30 now. It's been more than 30 now. But for many, many years going forward, there is always that undercurrent, and it's a, it's a, it's a really unpleasant, it's an unpleasant experience. And I'd suggest that if you can work together to form a homeowners association, you'll all benefit from being, having a seat at the table. So, I just wanted to make that comment while you were here. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, I think the difficulty that we have is that the first that we heard about this was the notice of this hearing. The developers had access to all the people who lived in the division. They could have told us of their plans. They could have sought our opinion, but we weren't given that opportunity. And I think that that therefore created an area, pardon me, an aura of distrust, that they were trying to pull a fast one on us. We just bought this lot last month, and the next thing we know, they want to build something next to it, which is different from what we had...
Expected.
Thought the subdivision was laid out for. So, I believe that if we're going to work together, we need to be recognized, and we think that this entire mechanism that was used in order to gain this potential permission undermined any trust that we might have had in the developers. I spoke with the developer on the phone. He seemed fairly open, but his lawyer told him that he shouldn't have done that. And that therefore makes me believe...
She didn't tell him that?
Well, this is what I was told...
Okay.
By a third party. Nevertheless, I think that that was the problem. We weren't given an opportunity to hear about this. And if we're going to work together, we have to work together. And we, we feel like we haven't been treated fairly, that our voices haven't been heard. That's why we're all here tonight. That's why I missed the boat at 8:20. My brother's dying of cancer. This is going to be my opportunity to see him tomorrow, and I'm going to miss that. We tried to move the agenda earlier on so I could make that, and it was put off. So, I'm here because I really believe this is important. We want to work together, but we want to be respected. And we don't feel like we've been given that respect.
Well, what's fortunate is this is going to go off to April, and I think there is an opportunity for everybody to have a conversation, which is clearly needed, to express both sides of this equation, because I know you feel a little sandbagged at the moment.
If I could, if I could just address that, I just want to assure the board that at no time did I indicate to the developer that he should not speak with anyone. Quite to the contrary, anyone who wrote a letter in or who we heard from, I urged him to speak with them and to try to, I mean, there were emails that went back and forth, talking about trying to find alternate lots. Unfortunately, you know, the way timing goes, we had to get the application, we're under certain deadlines. We had to get the application in. We didn't, we don't have the luxury necessarily of being able to canvass all of the owners. But to the extent that we know that people are interested and want to discuss it, we're more than happy to discuss it. I think compromise is definitely the word, and we're, we're certainly open to doing that. I think my client has made that extremely clear. You know, if we're presented with an option, don't do it at all. That's, there's nowhere to go with that.
Mm-hmm.
But we're certainly happy to try to find a happy medium. We're trying, happy to find a lot that works. We're happy to talk about restrictions. We're happy to talk about whether there's a pool or there isn't a pool. You know, we're happy to try to find what works the best. And, you know, ultimately, maybe it's better to just have 36 independent homes. I don't know. That may end up very well being where this ends up.
I think that's probably what they expected, and everybody wants a pool, builds their own pool, and they have complete control over the pool, and there's not 500 cars parked there.
But maybe we can have some sort of other shared community facility. The gym situation works very well at the casino. I don't see that bringing in a lot of traffic or difficulty. Most people ride their bikes or walk. I would think the same thing would happen in this subdivision. I certainly take Steve's, Steve's point about opening up the homeowners association to other owners. We'd certainly, you know, I think, benefit by that. It is, as we all know, a private road. Mr. Graham has been, on his own account, been maintaining the road all these years. That's going to stop once he's no longer in title, and we're going to end up with a situation where these 36 lots are part of a homeowners association that will undertake that road improvement. But it would be, be great to have the remaining 21 lots, or whatever there are, out there, partaking and having their voice heard in terms of decisions that are being made on maintenance and all that stuff going forward.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
I just had one question. Could I ask it?
Yeah, quickly.
Would the people that are here rather have a tennis court way in the back, way in the back in the corner?
That's something you got to talk to them about, Ron. We can't sell that here.
Okay. I just thought it was mentioned at all anyway.
But I suggest everybody have a conversation amongst yourselves between now and April 9th, so you're comfortable with whatever is going to happen.
And keep in mind the uniqueness. Like, this is 1973. See the signatures on that approval? It's pretty, pretty amazing.
I was here.
Of course you were.
I was here.
But, but this is odd. And if, I do agree with the point that somebody made about
if there was a pool here in, you know, 1985, probably no one would even be talking about any of this. But it's because it's never been there, you didn't expect it, and it was kind of reversed...
Changes hard.
And make it into Noshup before Noshup had a pool. You know what I'm saying? I get what you're, what you're thinking. But it is an unusual situation. I would also listen to what Steve said... I would also listen to what Steve said about the homeowners thing.
Yeah.
That's a good point, and you would have one if it was in the last 20 years, 15 years.
Because we require those, and we require the documents, and we require all that maintenance for the roads and whatnot, so there would have been one now. Barry's had his hand up for a while.
It's fine, you know, I understand what you're saying to me. Sometimes when you learn about these things last minute, of course, it catches you off guard.
Yeah.
And I understand the reaction associated with it. Got it. What I am glad about, though, is here's...something's gonna happen. This person who owns these properties have got things they want to do. You have an opportunity where a door is now open before you at this point that maybe wasn't. As one member of this board, I take that kind of real seriously. When a neighborhood needs to do something, it's important to have that opportunity to have these discussions in an open environment. Even if in the end it still means, "Okay, you're not happy with it, great, but at least the dialogue has taken place." And that's really my sincere hope at the moment, is that between now and next month, that that begins to happen. Maybe there'll be some good things that'll come out of it, I don't know, but the opportunity is there if the door's open. I'm just asking you maybe to take that little leap of faith and cross through it and see what comes out of it. So, thanks for listening.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Can I ask one quick question? Sir, can I ask you something? Sir?
Yes.
Grayson?
Hi.
Hi.
What is your brother's name?
Paul Drazen.
Paul Drazen?
Yes.
We'll pray for him. My wife and I will pray for him tonight.
Ditto. Absolutely. Sorry, I'm sorry to hear that.
I'm sorry you missed your boat, sir.
Well, yeah, we had an opportunity to get it. People had given us originally the opportunity to be first on the agenda. A lawyer for this group decided that we needed to stay in the spot. Another idea showing that I don't want to compromise.
Let it go. Let it go. Okay.
So what are we doing with this thing? Motion?
Motion to...
Was there any?
Motion to continue to... To April 9th. Yeah, they know what they have to do. If they change the lot, they have to renotice.
So second...I'll second the motion.
Who made the motion to continue? All right, Barry made the motion to continue to April 9th.
Yeah.
Nat seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's where it's going, at the moment. We're just not voting against it at the moment. We're amending the previous application. All right, Stephen Mori, discussion regarding property on 18 Pine Grove. Do you want to just throw that at it quickly, or what do you want to do with that?
Yeah, yes, so I'm obviously not Stephen Mori, I'm Stephen Cohen.
Guys, guys, stop. Stop. Go ahead.
So let me tell you where we are in this. My client is looking at building this...buying this property. It currently has a duplex on it, and my client is considering doing a tertiary on it, but because of the wetland setbacks, they'd have to essentially convert the basement to an apartment, which would have, you know, fire safety issues and other things that work out. But in order to get eight bedrooms, you'd need seven parking spaces, and seven parking spaces on this lot would be challenging. So the idea is really just to very quickly take your temperature of whether or not you think that's something that could work out based on the shape of the lot. There's a plan that I think you have that shows three spaces on one side and four spaces on the other side. That's one option, but I talked to the homeowner today, or the applicant today, and I think what we could do instead is maybe have a few spaces in front and a few spaces on the side of the yard, like up on the left. Instead of having those four stack spaces, we could do a driveway and then have some turn spaces, and try and have less in the front yard and more ability to do screening. But it likely needs two curb cuts, and it might need some stacked spaces. So...
They didn't want to go through all this hurrah without knowing that there was a possibility for them to consider this.
And anything to clean this up down here?
Yeah.
This is...
This is on the dirt section.
The other Macy's Lane, I call it. This is unbelievable.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's a lot of unpermitted work in the area, there's a lot of illegal dwellings, and there's a lot of...
Chaotic parking.
Chaotic parking, yeah. So what we'd like to do is, you know, as was one of the intentions of the tertiary, is to legalize those kind of dwelling units and also to clean them up through the permitting process.
Yeah, that's what's gonna happen down there anyway, so...
So, yeah, so what my client would want to do is make it a legal basement apartment and put in sufficient parking, but that parking would require some waivers, it would...and likely two curb cuts. So I just want to take your temperature on how do you feel about three dwellings here, and how do you feel about seven parking spaces?
Well, it sounds like they already have it minus the stove, according to what he's saying.
No, they don't have anything in the basement.
But it's got something, so...
I'm not the owner, and I haven't been in the building.
Okay, well, it doesn't matter, so...
Is that an answer?
That's a good answer.
Yeah. And any improvements are warranted, in my personal opinion.
John?
How many bedrooms are we talking about combined with the duplex and what you're proposing for the tertiary?
Sure, so the duplex is currently three bedrooms, and then there's a basement, and so we would either make it a one-bedroom studio or a two-bedroom, and if it was a one-bedroom studio, we might do a little bump out to make it a four and three in the duplex. It depends on how the numbers work out, but eight total, three dwellings.
Okay. I think I'd be more inclined to be on the lesser of the one-bedroom, and instead of trying to worry about that extra parking that's not going to exist. I mean, just...
No, I didn't follow you, I'm sorry.
He's just asking for a total of eight bedrooms.
Yeah, okay. Well, we're giving them two curb cuts, I'm just...what's already there, we're going to be improving and adding the tertiary to make a non-compliant bedroom into a legal bedroom, and not just say...do it tastefully and consider reducing it instead of expanding it, and make it a full...I don't know.
I lost.
Are you...are you...
We're all lost.
...seven bedrooms instead, or I'm not sure?
Yeah. Yes, pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
Gotcha.
Okay, so I get that, but eight is kinda where the numbers work to make the...put in these sprinklers and all that kind of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of upgrade on the structure.
Right, you know, so the eight bedroom sort of makes the math work.
Anybody else have any comments at the moment? Give them a shot at it?
I mean, I think the most important thing, can they legally keep that wide front like that and just... We had this issue on Pine Tree.
We changed the bylaw on Pine Tree, Macy's, Mary Ann.
Yeah, 'cause it's better to leave it.
Leslie? Leslie?
Sorry, Les.
It's up to you as a special permit granting authority, but I do think that looks like a lot of parking, and maybe it's just the...
So we're gonna try...we're gonna go back to the Pine Tree thing, and we're gonna try to kind of cut it up a little, make it look like two cuts?
I think with some...
Tasteful.
Some screening.
Yeah.
It's currently...
Block it off, and if you could do anything with that left side to make it...
It's currently parking the entire width across. Will you see that?
Guys, one conversation, please.
Where the hashtag is next to the number 18, there's a tree and a little utility pole there, but otherwise the entire thing is parking across right now. So the idea would be to try to move some of that to the side and the left so that you wouldn't have so much stacked parking and so that you wouldn't have...you'd be able to screen it better and would break it up a little, and that would, I think, improve both the traffic egress and ingress and also the aesthetics from the road.
Carl? I don't want to spend too much time here.
Okay. Can you do angle parking on the right and left for three and four?
Yeah, I think we can.
Do you have the room?
On the...
To do angle instead of stacked?
Yeah, no, that's exactly what I'm saying is...
That's what's happening now, it's terrible.
We might end up with, you know, one stacked, but I think three stacked is not a good situation. I would expect the board to push back on that, and so I think that what we'd like to do is probably have two driveways, but on the left one, we'd put more of the parking, angled parking, sort of in the...towards the backyard, so that you'd be able to have no stacked parking on that side.
All right, but if people are willing to consider looking at something, Leslie?
A couple more questions, please. Where's the wetland? Can you not park behind?
Yes, well, so the wetland...the wetland 50-foot buffer comes within eight feet of the back of the house.
Yeah.
I don't think you have a plan that shows it, but if you go...if you can just sort of imagine, eight feet behind the house is where those...we couldn't put a structure, but...
And it drops off, Steve, very dramatically.
There's a...
Straight down to the hill behind Pilot Well.
So, but Mr. Guisparro has advised me that you can put gravel parking within the 50, so we could get several spaces back there. Enough to make it work without having three stacked spaces.
Yeah, I don't know how you'd get out of there. You'd have to drive around the house to get out.
Yeah.
Okay, so should we come back with something that makes sense?
I'm gonna comment. I agree with John, I think seven might be a better bedrooms. You'll lose one parking space.
Yeah. Okay, well, I appreciate that, I think we'll...
There's still gonna be seven parking spaces.
I think we'll work the numbers and we'll work on some plans, and we'll come back. I really mostly wanted to see, or Mr. Mori wanted to see, and I'm here for him, he actually is my second reason I'm here tonight, because his wife had a baby last night.
Who did?
So, it's a...what?
Who did?
Stephen Mori, his wife had a baby last night.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, so that's...
I saw him on...
That's why he's not here.
I saw him Sunday...I saw him Saturday.
You're not Steve Mori.
Oh, great.
No.
Congratulations.
It's not because I'm more charming and persuasive.
Is it a boy, is it a girl?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Oh, fine, you're a great attorney for that.
I have no...I have no details. So anyway, as long as the board isn't basically laughing and saying, "No, a tertiary's not gonna work here," or "No, none of these, you know, parking looks impossible," then we'll come back with a real application that has those details. So what I'm hearing is, you know, make it work and come back with a real thing.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is Clay Street subdivision. The only thing that's on tonight is a request to open...have us vote to open the public hearing for April 9th. Not a lot of testimony tonight, it's just simply to have us vote to public hearing it for April 9th. Does that make sense to you guys? 'Cause I know you're here, and half of you guys, the rest of you guys are all here for this, and you need to chair this.
I am recusing from that, yeah.
You're recusing?
Yeah, I am.
Why are you recusing?
Unplaced, yeah.
Because of...
It's associated...
What you call it?
Richmond.
Yeah, the thing.
Oh.
The policy with the shingles.
Sorry, exactly, this is a little bigger, yeah, so...
So I draw the...
Well, I have a recuse also.
For the chairing.
Nat, you're chairing this, you have all this time on this.
I know that, I know, I know. So I already knew that, Linda, I get the short straw when there's all these recusals. So here we are, so yes, so Linda's right that we're gonna vote to reopen the public hearing on Clay Street due to an application...
An application?
Well, not an application, a use and a discussion next month, and we'll have a lot of information we'll have to discuss, correct? Yes. So, do you wanna...okay, Ed, go ahead. Do you wanna...it sounds like you're gonna run up there anyway, so go ahead. Huh?
Do you want a Noddis Trust dialogue here for half an hour?
We don't.
Right, okay, so...
Gotta get the generator out of the shed.
I'll get right to the point, yeah, we...I represent myself and the neighbors in the community, most of which are either year-round or some native-born, okay? We want to reopen the...I have a problem, though, now, that two people are recused, so when the decision was made...
It's a three to two.
Okay, but when the decision was made...
It's...
The airplane, okay? Don't those same people have to come back in to vote on the reopening or the dialogue?
No. She's shaking her head no.
Okay, I just...I was unclear about that.
And it's a regular subdivision, regular majority, so we don't have to have alternates, the three of us can do that.
How does it work in terms of numbers?
Yeah, it's already...we've already asked those questions.
No, but if you have three people voting, so how does it work, two-one, or...
No, it would have to be unanimous. It would have to be unanimous.
No.
No? Okay, Leslie, go ahead.
It could be two to one.
It can? Oh, I stand corrected.
I believe so.
Well, again, this is why we didn't want to get into this too much.
Yeah, I understand.
We're gonna have...we need to reopen the public hearing, Ed.
'Cause it...
Because that's protecting you.
Yeah, but will that be done?
Yes.
Okay, all right, fine.
Yes, there.
Okay, fine.
We're trying to help.
One last point, though, I spoke with Andrew last Wednesday.
Yeah.